Madam Clerk, you want to do the roll?
Supervisor Brettafield.
Here.
Supervisor Chavez.
Here.
Supervisor Magzig.
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco.
Here.
Chairman Mendez.
I'm here.
The mics aren't working, Bernie. None of the mics are working.
Nope.
Just buddies.
Just the chairmen, yeah.
Hey.
I'll talk loud.
Okay, welcome to the August 19th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the invocation and flag salute. The invocation will be led by District Five. After the invocation, remain standing for the flag salute.
Here with us today, we have David Yetter. He's the family pastor of New Covenant Community Church, which is located in Fresno. Over his 40 years of ministry, Dave has served churches in Corona, East San Jose, Richmond, Brentwood, and now here in Fresno. His personal mission statement is to reconcile people to God and one another through the cross of Jesus Christ. He and Sandy, his bride of 45 years, have four children and they have 11 grandchildren. So please rise with me as we hear the invitation.
Thank you, and good morning. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for your love and guidance and for the abundance and beauty of our Fresno County. We are grateful for our productive orchards and the thriving businesses, for the rich diversity of our communities, and for the dedication of those who here in this room serve us in leadership. As today work begins, we ask that wisdom and understanding and collaboration will lead us to decisions that honor and uplift all who called us their home. With gratitude for your grace and goodness, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance-
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, approve agenda. Yeah, they're working on it. I'm not sure what the problem is. Mine's working, I'm not sure why. Let me check to see if the staff table mics are working.
Can I swap them out? Oh, you know what? Mine just came on. It was flashing, I think it was rebooting, so let's see if yours now works.
Yep.
Mic check.
Good to go. On.
At least your mic's happy.
So I have stereo now. Mine came back on again.
Item number one, approve agenda.
I'll move for approval of the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, so we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. I know we have some consent items to be pulled off, so I'm ready for the list.
Item number two, approve consent agenda, item numbers 20 through, 23 through 62.
Chairman, I'd like to ask for items 49, 50, and 52 to be pulled, for the Levine Act, for me.
Anybody else need anything pulled off?
Yes, 52, to recuse myself as well.
Okay, 52.
For the Levine Act, yep.
Okay.
And I too, Mr. Chairman, number 52.
Okay, so we will be drawing straws. And you're all prepared, right, Madam Clerk? Is there anyone in the public that wants to pull an item off consent? Go ahead.
32, please.
32. So I will take a motion for the balance.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor, so we're saying aye.
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 Which way you want to do them, or you want to do the...
What we could do is go to item five and then take up the consent items.
Do it after item five.
If you and the board are okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll now move to item number three, under Board of Supervisors, presentation of retirement plaque to Catherine Lombardi, Department of Social Services, 20 years of service.
Is, so, Social Service Director here?
We're going to present it first. So I'm Sonya Bougaye, Director of Social Services. A lot of people showing up for Karen Lombardi, and one of our supervisors, Joanna Washington, is going to give you a little bit more about Karen.
Hi, I'm Joanna Washington, Administrative Support Coordinator for the Department of Social Services, and this is...
I'm Ray Perez, I'm the Administrative Support Coordinator as well for child welfare.
And it is an honor to stand here today to speak on behalf of Catherine Lombardi, as we celebrate not just the end of a remarkable career, but the legacy of a model employee. I've had the privilege of supervising Catherine for six years and witnessing firsthand the dedication, passion, and humor that she brought to our workplace every single day. We sincerely thank Catherine for her nearly 21 years of dedicated service to the county. Catherine started in May 2004 as a library aide, and in October 2016, she transitioned to our Child Welfare Division, where she played an essential role in emergency response referrals and clerical support. Her consistent reliability, attention to detail, and taking initiative greatly supported our team's work. Catherine, on behalf of all of us, I want to thank you for the countless ways you've contributed to the department and our unit, for the relationships you've built, and for the example you've set. We wish you nothing but the best as you embrace the next chapter of life, whether it's traveling, spending time with loved ones, diving into hobbies, or simply enjoying well-earned rest. So congratulations.
Did she want to speak? You don't have to, but I'm just giving you an opportunity.
I just want to say that it was an honor and a privilege to serve the county of Fresno, and I got a lot of gratification from being supportive for the social workers so they could make a difference in children's lives. And Joanna, she was a really great supervisor, patient, and understanding with a sense of humor, and I'm really glad that she was my supervisor. And I worked with some wonderful people. It was just awesome to be part of the Child Welfare Services, to help. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the board or comments? Do you want to go ahead and come up?
Oh, we can do the picture.
Thank you.
Morning.
Congratulations. Good, you got it. Thank you.
Good morning.
Congratulations.
We now move to item number four, under the Board of Supervisors, presentation of retirement plaque to Karen Cowdery, Department of Behavioral Health, 22 years of service.
Susan Holt was hiding in the back.
There's an outlet back there, I can work. Susan Holt, your Behavioral Health Director and Public Guardian, really an honor to be here with my team today. Division Manager Sean Patterson will speak on our department's behalf, but you might notice I'm getting a little choked up. Karen is a really special person in our department, and I had a brief conversation with her outside this morning, and the word grace came up. And then during the invocation, the word grace was mentioned again. And I just want to emphasize how important Karen and her work were to our department, and she always led with grace. And when life threw curveballs her way, experiences that no one should have to endure, she has demonstrated grace through all of that. So without further ado, Mr. Sean Patterson, Division Manager.
Good morning, Chairman Mendez, members of the board, Sean Patterson, Behavioral Health Division Manager. This morning, I have the pleasure of being here to recognize one of my colleagues, Karen Cowdery, and there are several others in the audience today recognizing her as well. Karen began work for the county as an account clerk for the Human Services Finance Department in 2002. When those accounting functions were decentralized in 2009, she became a DBH employee supporting medical billing. In 2012, she was promoted to a supervisory position and became an expert in billing Medi-Cal, Medicare, and other health coverage. She continued in this position until her retirement in March of this year. Working closely with Karen, I'll share that professionally, she was one of the most reliable sources of knowledge in her area of expertise. Knowing her personally, I really missed having Karen in the department. I spoke with her last week and asked if there was anything she wanted me to share or not share. She told me she probably wouldn't be able to speak because it would be difficult for her, but that she really didn't want to retire when she did. Due to personal loss, her retirement came earlier than she anticipated, but it's afforded her the opportunity to be at home with her husband. And that truly describes who Karen is. She's always looking out for the people she cares about. So my colleagues and I are happy that she was able to make it today for us to be able to recognize her. We very much appreciate your board's support in that. Thank you, Karen, for your 22 years of commitment to the individuals we serve, and thank you for choosing to be a part of our DBH finance team.
Did you want to say anything, Karen, or... Well, thank you very much, and I could tell you either love working for the county or you love the people that you work with, so...
I didn't really want to-
Any other comments from the board? Why don't you go ahead and come up?
Those are pretty colorful today.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
We now move to item number five, under the Board of Supervisors, confirm appointment of Doug Sloan effective September 1st, 2025, to the position of County Counsel pursuant to County Charter Section 16, and approve amendment to the salary resolution increasing salary range for County Counsel effective August 18, 2025.
Yeah, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to ask Doug Sloan, if he would, to make his way to the podium. For members of the public that have not yet had the chance to meet Doug, this item is officially confirming the appointment of Doug Sloan as our next candidate counsel. A little background, he just came from serving three years at the Santa Monica City Attorney's Office overseeing that office, nine years as the city of Fresno City Attorney, seven years as the Assistant City Attorney, 19 years as a trial lawyer before that, and interesting enough, an avid bicycle rider that he shares with at least one of our board members, and sounds like he's done a lot of riding.
Mendez.
I've had the chance to get to know him briefly, and looking forward to working with Doug. I also want to take a brief moment to thank Peter Wall, who served as our interim candidate counsel during this transition, but we're very excited to work with Doug, and would turn it back to the board at this point, or to Doug, so...
Okay. Go ahead, Doug.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, board members, first of all, I really appreciate this opportunity to return home and serve you all in Fresno County. It really means a lot to me. The coins I left you are just a bit of symbolism for everybody's benefit. There's, there are coins that say yes on both sides.
Yeah. A decision coin, it is.
I also must say that I really appreciate you all and everybody with the county that's been very professional and helpful in this onboarding process, and I thank you for that. So I will be here September 2nd, ready to go. Again, I thank you all for this opportunity.
Okay, we're looking forward, Doug.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm really excited about Doug Sloan coming here. My colleague Chavez, Supervisor Chavez, and I both worked with Doug at the city for many years, and the county is going to be well-served. We are all going to be well-served by having Doug Sloan here, and I think, you know, his coin says it all. He's about finding ways to get things done, not about finding ways to get things done. So it's going to be very positive. We have real leadership coming to the county, and I look forward to it. Welcome, Doug.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Looking forward for you coming. Yeah, we need a... Got a motion to confirm, a second, all in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
So you're officially confirmed.
Mr. Chairman, we'll take up items from consent. A member of the public pulled item 32, under Administrative Office, review the findings and recommendations of the 2024-25 Fresno County Civil Grand Jury Final Report Number Three, Fresno County Department of Behavioral Health. Will department be able to meet current and future challenges?
Thank you, Brandy Nusviegas. I want to thank the grand jury for this report. I know that's a lot of work, and even more work I appreciate and recognize, the hard work, and the needs of our social workers and other behavioral health staff with the Department of Behavioral Health. I ask, going forward, I ask the board to diligently work with the department, to work through and take seriously the recommendations by the grand jury, to ensure that the needs of our social workers and other staff are met, from items that have been identified, such as the need for sufficient supplies, and the lack of, and the lack of that, as well as things that were partially disagreed upon, such as the need for sufficient training and communication and other preparations. These are not only needed for the staff to do their work successfully, it is also needed for the vulnerable populations who are being served by this department. Again, I want to extend my gratitude for the hard work of all of our, all of our staff and social workers, and ask for the county's support in meeting, hearing, and meeting their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? I want to go back to the board. Clerk, what exactly? Do we just, are we just receiving it?
No, you're, you're going to be approving the item.
Okay.
I'll move for approval.
Second, all in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item 49, which was pulled by Supervisor Magzig due to the Levine Act. Under Public Health, approve and authorize Chairman to execute memorandum of understanding with Blue Cross of California Partnership Plan Incorporated, doing business as Anthem, Fresno Kings, Madera Regional Health Authority, doing business as Calvia Health and Kaiser Foundation Health Plan, for the coordination and compensation for services provided by the Department of Public Health.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a brief statement on this one. On item 49, which is an MOU involving Fresno Kings, Madera Regional Health Authority, the staff report mentions that Supervisor Brettafield sits on the board of that authority. That statement is a notice for purposes of Government Code, Section 1091.5, subdivision A9, and the supervisor may vote on that item. And then I would also add that item is distinguishable from items 55 and 58, that were, I think, earlier approved on consent, because those do not involve contracts, and I believe the supervisor sits on boards of other bodies involved in those items.
Okay, is there... Is there any discussion?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second, is there any public comment on this? Hearing none, I got a motion and a second, all in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item 50, which was pulled by Supervisor Magzig due to the Levine Act. Under Public Health, approve and authorize Chairman to execute retroactive revenue agreement with Fresno County Superintendent Schools for participation in the organized home visitation network.
Okay, is there any public comment on this? Come back to the board.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Second, all in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Now, this one, we have to pull lots.
Yes, and I want to make sure Brettafield was the motion maker on that last item?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I didn't hear. Now we are moving to item 52. Pulled by Supervisor Magzig and Brettafield and Pacheco due to the Levine Act, approve and authorize Chairman to execute Fourth Amendment Agreement with KWPH Enterprises, American, doing business as American Ambulance, to authorize an increase in maximum allowable user fee rates, with no change to the term of January 1st, 2018, through December 31st, 2027.
Well, Nathan pick first this time.
So three board members have a conflict under the Levine Act and under the rule of necessity, so that the board can conduct business that it needs to conduct, the three disqualified board members, Supervisors Magzig, Brettafield, and Pacheco, will participate in a drawing conducted by the Clerk of the Board to determine which of them will participate to make a quorum for this item.
Okay, I don't need to pick.
Supervisor Brettafield will serve on this item.
It'd be nice if you could win something worth winning, you know?
I know.
Okay, is, is there any public comment on this item? I'll move it back to the board.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? I'll second it. All in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
That concludes all consent items that were pulled from this morning, Mr. Chairman. We now return to the regular agenda items, item number six, under Supervisor Brettafield, adopt resolution approving the display of the national motto, "In God We Trust," in the Fresno County Board of Supervisors chambers above the seal of Fresno County.
Can I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
What's that?
Can I proceed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. You know, President Johnson, President Kennedy, John Kennedy, said, quote, "The guiding principle and prayer of this nation has been, is now, and shall ever be, 'In God We Trust.'" From the time our country was founded, and Thomas Jefferson wrote the Declaration of Independence, that we are all created equal and given rights by our Creator, God and faith has been a part of our nation's unprecedented and gloried history. "In God We Trust" originated in 1814, when Francis Scott Key composed the poem "The Star-Spangled Banner," and wrote in the final, is this working? He wrote in the final stanza, quote, "And this be our motto, 'In God We Trust,'" end quote. "In God We Trust" was then placed on coins in 1864. It was signed into law as our national motto in 1956 by President Eisenhower. It was reaffirmed as our national motto by the House of Representatives, HR 13, in 2011, by an overwhelming vote of 396 to 9. Bipartisan support, bipartisan. HR 13 also supported and encourages the public display of our national motto in all public buildings, schools, and other government institutions. Not surprisingly, this has been challenged in the courts, and every time, courts have found that the placement of our national motto in public buildings is legal and doesn't affirm any particular religion. In July 2010, a federal appeals court in the District of Columbia ruled 3-0 that the national motto was constitutional under the First Amendment. The court quoted the 1970 decision in Aaronover's United States, maintaining, quote, "It is quite obvious that the national motto and slogan on coinage and currency, 'In God We Trust,' has nothing to do with the establishment of religion, rather its use is of patriotic or ceremonial character. We're clearly a nation that was founded on faith. 'In God We Trust' does not choose one religion over another." I wouldn't support it if it did. It simply and eloquently reminds us that those of us that believe in God should trust in Him to guide us as we make important decisions for all citizens of Fresno County. Those who don't believe have the freedom to interpret the national motto as they wish or simply disregard it. Before every board meeting, just as today, we have leaders from different religions in parts of the county say a prayer. We then cite the Pledge of Allegiance. It's always meaningful, respectful, and dignified. If you want to, don't want to participate, you don't have to. That is what makes our country great. We respect each other, though we may have different beliefs. We are a community and nation comprised of different people, cultures, backgrounds, faiths, and homelands. What we share is a love of this country and its heritage of faith, freedom, and liberty. "In God We Trust" represents that faith, values, and patriotism. That is why 759 cities and counties across the countries have placed our national motto in their chambers. In California, 147 cities and counties have done the same, has have 10 cities in Fresno County. And of course, it's prominently displayed in the House of Representatives in Washington, DC. Fresno County, like other counties across the United States, embraces our history of faith, values, respect for all, love of our country. That will be reflected in a very positive and strong message for generations to come who visit this chamber and see our national motto on the wall. I would like to make a motion to adopt the resolution displaying our national motto, "In God We Trust," in the Fresno County Board of Supervisors chambers above the seal of Fresno County, and I believe we have a picture somewhere that we could put on the screen. Is that... I'm not sure. Do we have it, or don't we?
There it goes.
There we go. Well, can't make it bigger, huh? Okay, so that's, in essence, what it would look like if the board approves it, and we have, in our staff report, a bigger picture, but that's in essence what it would be. So I make that motion.
Okay, did you guys want to do discussion? I'm going to go to public comment.
I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I supported this when it came about at the city of Fresno. I know my colleague, Supervisor Brettafield, brought it, and he just cited his motives. I'm not somebody that pushes my religion on other folks, but I'm not ashamed to speak about it, and I think people have a right to know where I stand on this. I got this question a number of times last year during the campaign, and I'm supportive of it because I've had the privilege and honor of praying in various different places of worship here in the Central Valley, and I love that about our community, whether it was my own Catholic church, or a Christian church, or Sikh Punjabi Gurubara, or synagogue. I think faith brings us together. My hope is that, as we put this sign up here on us, that we live out the true meaning of what that phrase means, because my God is a God that accepts and loves everybody for who they are, no matter, you know, what they do, He reserved judgment for them on Judgment Day. And so that's my hope, Supervisor Brettafield, that as we put this up on the dais, and we legislate, and we have heated discussions and conversations- legislate, and we have heated discussions and conversations, that we hold that respect for each other, and that we use this place to unite our community and not divide us. Because as I said, you know, when we pray, and I do that every single day, I do that with the hopes that we become a better community for our kids. So, with that.
Okay, any other?
I'll wait.
Okay. I'm going to call for a public comment. If you're going to comment, please get in line.
Hello, I'm Brandy Nusby, I guess.
And I just want to make one announcement. If you want, want to talk, you need to be in line right now. So there will not be anybody after the lady back there in a blue dress. Okay.
Uh, Board, I respectfully ask that, that you consider the whole of our community and oppose this item. Fresno County is a richly culturally diverse area with many ethnic groups represented, and that is a point of pride and something that the Board should demonstrate in terms of respect, and something I am very proud of. This diversity includes different beliefs or no belief. Within our county, there are people from multiple faith traditions that are monotheistic, to whom this would maybe permanent. While there are also many of those who do not hold a monotheistic religious belief from a wide array of cultures, who are equal as constituents and as leaders, same as our founding fathers, there's, where's diversity, and, and not everyone was a Christian faith. Council and, and board chambers are public institutions that belong equally to all members of the community regardless of religion or creed, as well as there's diversity among people of faith that have different views regarding this item, including those who do not agree with the placement of the signage of the chamber for various reasons, including consideration of our neighbors. This being a, a permanent sign in the chambers asserting a particular religion statement and belief, however broad, would show the county is choosing not to represent or recognize all constituents and decision-makers equally in this space. What is notable to this item is that, is from the previous Board of Supervisors meeting, where Butterfield and Magzig referred to the county's flag policy, which was created to limit the display of flags to only represent our state, nation, and veterans, with the idea of not representing any other groups, and that these flags are the most inclusive. The signage seems to go against this perspective, and also seems to not reflect the Fresno County guidelines and mission. The different facets of diversity in community can be shown through the many celebrations, acknowledgment that happen throughout the year that represent a diverse community, which do not assert a county-wide identification with the white celebrities, such as the various cultural celebrations. Like the items regarding celebration, this is the opportunity and necessity of the Board to show that you and the county represent all constituents. Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Amanda, and I'm an atheist. I'm also a local teacher who works with students and families of many different religions and beliefs. I took off time to be here today because I strongly oppose the "In God We Trust" signage. It marginalizes members of our community who have different beliefs or no faith at all, like me. Personally, this signage makes me feel like you don't value me or others like me. This is a public institution that belongs equally to all members of the community. Our country was not founded as a theocracy. Please do not force your beliefs on us. I also just want to note, I'm not sure if our tax dollars will be funding this signage, but I personally do not think that my tax dollars should go to funding something that I myself do not believe in and other members of this community do not believe in. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Mendez and Supervisors. My name is Reverend Tom Dais, I'm the pastor of the Big Red Church in the Fresno High Neighborhood. I'm here because I was asked to speak on this item by a member of the community, and I'm assuming they asked me because they thought I would speak against it. To be clear, I am in favor in the motto, "Our God We Trust," "In God We Trust." Actually, I'm not in favor of the motto, I'm in favor of the practice. It's not a motto, it's not a slogan, it's not a cliche. It's a practice, it's something that we do with our life, it's a, it's a decision to trust God, and particularly in the Bible, it calls us to trust God over money, over power, and over force. The Bible repeatedly calls us to trust God over money, power, and force, because we know how tempting it is. And we know how tempting it is for people who have more and more responsibility. In fact, the more responsibility somebody has, the more tempting it is to put your trust in money, power, and force. I would imagine the responsibilities that you carry requires a lot of effort, and you think about the money it will take, the power that it will take, and the force it will take to make it happen. But to trust in God means that you let go of that trust, and you trust in the things of God and God's character, like peace, and patience, and kindness, gentleness, self-control, faithfulness, goodness. And so I would encourage the county taking on trusting in God, but as the practice, not as a, a motto. It's important throughout the Bible that we don't profess to trust in God without actually our actions trusting in God. One of the Ten Commandments is to not use the Lord's name in vain. A good example of using the Lord's name in vain would be to say, "I trust in God, yet my actions don't trust, don't show that I trust in God." I do understand that this is a, a normal statement to have displayed in, in government buildings. I do find it odd that the placement would be behind you, that the supervisors' backs would be to this statement, that you would be turning your back on trusting in God. And so I have a recommendation. If it is that important to have this motto displayed, maybe you have it in front of each of you, so that each time you sit in that chair, you are reminded that you put your trust in God, not trust in money, or power, or force. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kay Burtkin, and I, I second the recommendation that it not be behind you. I may have a kind of quirky take on this, but I remember when it was put behind the city council, it suggested to me that I not trust my elected representatives, that somehow this represented an abdication of their responsibilities in that house of government, where we had elected people that we presumably trusted to act in our, to our benefit. And I suggest that the same problem will occur to me here, seeing "In God We Trust", facing your constituents, again, not facing you, not guiding your decisions, but rather explaining to your constituents that maybe you're not fully responsible. You are fully responsible in this house of temporal responsibility. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Molly, and I am in support of this item. When we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we say, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." That's for everybody. And I want to say, I want to thank Supervisor Chavez for his words, they ring true with me. And as far as having the sign behind you, I don't know if it's possible if you'd rather move it over to this wall over here, but again, I am supportive of this item, and I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Fukuyama, and I'm here in support of this item as well. And I want to thank Mr. Chavez and Mr. Butterfield both for their comments, because I think you made it very clear that this is not about division, but about unity and supporting all faiths, even those who don't believe, because that is her faith, that she doesn't believe in anything. You know, the motto has been around, and you gave the history, it really signifies a belief in reliance on a higher power, often interpreted as a reference to God. The phrase is meant to convey national reliance on divine support and to bolster moral, morale during times of national crisis. And I feel like that's, this is an appropriate time to unite and to come together as a country. So I think it would boast morale, and thank you for the, doing, having this discussion today.
Hello, thank you, my name is Angelique. I am in agreeance with this, but at the same time, with what my fellow citizen said about standing on this. I recently wrote a letter to the Board of Supervisors regarding a particular situation, dealing with my son in the Fresno jail, and if this was to be true, then the problems that we are having now with him and the other jail inmates, would, they, they would be in better hands if this is true. So, to just not to have it on the board, but to really trust in God and handle the citizens who are having a very, very difficult time, is where I stand. Thank you.
I'm going to make an exception. Rabbi, you were out in the, came late, did you want to speak?
Thank you for your time, sorry for my tardiness. Could I make an invocation or no invocation? Or you want to say, talk to the subject? "In God We Trust," straight. In New York, we say "In God We Trust," all of us pay cash. That's what we say in New York. In the, the Bible, in the Book of Deuteronomy, there's a famous prayer that starts off with, in English, "Hero Israel, the Lord is our God, the Lord is one." In Hebrew, the word "one," in numerology, comes out to thirteen. Thirteen were the original colonies of the United States of America. The United States of America was founded on the principles of God, primarily because immigrants wanted to show a commitment to the Almighty God. The, uh... Our, our country, if we want to have a sane and civil society, you need to have a balance between, what we say in the Ten Commandments, the laws of man to mankind to God, and the laws of mankind to mankind. It's a balance of five and five, it's not independent. And as you gentlemen who are honored, who are elected to, to supervise the county and to bring our county closer to God, it is your duty to follow. And our, and we, as, as the people, want you to be successful in this endeavor. One of the special things about God and the Central Valley is that the Central Valley is the agriculture capital of the world. That's what we advertise. And the true believer in God is a farmer, because if he doesn't plant right, he could plant all he wants to, and guess what? If God doesn't want, give the proper rain, or God doesn't give the proper sun, always the farmer's work is in vain. So it is incumbent upon us, as a body, as a people, to show and declare our faith in God, especially because it's, the United, the United States is our foundation of one nation under God. The United, the dollar bill that has a special thing about, I can't show it on the video, but if you look at the dollar bill that we all spend, it starts off with "In God We Trust," and historically was, by the first Treasury of the United States declared...
You want to finish up?
Yes. The first Treasury of the United States declared that this has to be part of our coinage. So "In God We Trust," thank you very much.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Go ahead, Nate.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. So, you know, for me, I am supportive of the motto, but I will say that approving a motto which the nation already embraces, you know, doing that is easy. Living your life in accordance to truly that motto is difficult, and I, I strive to live my life in accordance with that motto. Someone talked about, you know, maybe the motto should face us, I don't, you know, I don't disagree with that. But again, as I look at this, one of the things I'm mindful of is when this nation was founded, and Alexis de Tocqueville came here in the eighteen thirties, you know, several decades after the country was founded, he recognized that the reason the United States worked is we had shared values. What we've already seen here today is a number of individuals who've come up, who've actually indicated, we don't have shared values anymore. One thing that's heartbreaking to me is, I look at what's going on across the nation, and to some extent, we're fighting against each other, and you know what? We are one nation, and we should be embracing each other. So, for me, the, this is just a motto, it is more difficult to live out that motto. That's what I strive to do, and I would encourage everyone else, let's look for the commonality that we have, because we are neighbors, we are brothers and sisters, and we need to be doing more to help each other. I will second the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too, I support the national motto, I believe our country was founded on that. However, I don't believe it's necessary to be in our, our boardroom. I appreciate your comment, Supervisor Magzig, and I think out of all of us up here, in my personal opinion, you, more than anyone, practice what you, you preach, and whenever we need a opening prayer, no one's prepared, you always fulfill that for us, and I, I truly appreciate that about you. I want to say, for me, I believe like Supervisor Chavez, I appreciate your comments, I know the lady said she, resonated with her, I appreciate your comments as well. And while me, like you, I am a Catholic, but I keep that separate when I'm up here, I have my own personal beliefs, but I make my decisions what I believe is in the best interest of everyone that we serve, and I don't, I don't wear it on my, my sleeve per se. I believe God accepts everyone, yet it seems over the last several months, we just do more and more things to divide people and groups. I believe religion should be kept out of the boardroom. I like the lady's suggestion, it shouldn't be behind us, although it looks nice for the photos and all that. If you really want to practice what you preach, then it should be out in the front, so when we look out the people, then we look at the sign, and that would help, help remind us. So I, I support that. And during my first two years on the board, we all had to go, and we, in our time, we have people come and do the opening prayer, and I had a person approach me and said, it seems like for a number of their years, all you do, meaning the board, you have Judeo Christians in here, yet there's never been a Jewish rabbi come in and give an opening prayer. And when I thought about it, the lady that approached me was right, and so for the first time, I had a Jewish rabbi come in and give our prayer from a rabbi perspective, and that's never, never been done since. So, I think, again, why we do this, it really does, does divide us a bit, we may all have a common belief, but it's a little bit different. I want to say, for me, I appreciate the minister from the, the Red Church. I don't know who he is, never met him before, but his words resonated with me. And I hope that when we go and debate our other items, it's going to be a controversial item here, that we have peace, patience, and kindness when we discuss those items, because everybody should be treated with dignity and respect, irregardless of our personal beliefs. So if we're going to hang this in our boardroom, then maybe we'll start treating people like that, because it's not been done in the past, in my opinion. And we're going to see it in full display here in another two items, if we're going to have peace, patience, and kindness with all people, even the most downtrodden and the ones that need our help the most. So, and the rabbi, true believers in God is a farmer. Buddy and I are the true farmers here, we're the production farmers here, we believe in farmers and what we do every day, and you got to have a lot of faith, because when we put a seed in the ground, it's through faith alone that we pray to God that that comes up, and we have a bountiful harvest. And, and I always said, we're the true optimists, because as bad as it is, we always believe tomorrow's going to be better than, than today. But I appreciate your, your comments. And for me personally, I don't need a sign to remind me of my beliefs and that, and I believe, while... to remind me of my beliefs and that. And I believe, while though we were founded, it's been radically made clear, we should keep it separate. Again, I fully support the motto, but I for one do not believe that we need it in the boardroom. And that's all I want to say about it.
Okay, there was a lot of very nice things said. And I kind of agree with, with Brian, but I think if we did do that, it should be over there too. You know, it's, it's a double deal. So with that, do you want to do a roll call vote?
Sure. Suraj Redefield?
Yes.
Suraj Magzig?
Aye.
Suraj Chavez? Suraj Pacheco?
No.
Chairman Mendez?
I'm, I'm gonna say yes reluctantly.
Four to one, Suraj Pacheco voting no.
If it's, I don't know if there, there's a sign over there. Two.
I'm good with two signs, one over there and one behind us.
Well, that's fine. If there's two, it should be back here. If you want to put one there, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay with that.
As long as it's both.
Yep.
Okay, so you're modifying, proving the item with reflecting on both sides of the chamber. Okay. Thank you. That finalizes item number six. We now go to item number seven, under the administrative office, accept presentation by the Children and Families Commission of Fresno County on the commission's proposed 2025-202030 strategic plan.
Good morning, Supervisors. Fabiola Gonzalez, Executive Director with First Five Fresno County, also known as the Children and Families Commission of Fresno County, as listed in your agenda. I'm here before you to present the First Five Fresno Counties 2025-2030 Strategic Plan, as required by county ordinance. Just give you a brief overview. And Ron, thank you, Ron, you're giving me the clicker here. Let me make sure. By, just by way of background, I want to make sure that you, I want to thank all of you for the time you gave me last week and a couple of weeks ago to meet one-on-one, to tell you a little bit more about the plan and give you some highlights. And so we're here to just briefly go over some of what I shared with you and answered questions with you last week. As you remember, for background, in 1998, California voters passed Proposition 10, which established a 50 cent tax on tobacco products sold in California to create the Children and Families Act. And this established first five commissions in every county charged with implementing an integrated system of services to support the optimal development of children from prenatal stage to age five, so that they are ready to succeed in school and in life. So there's one first five in every county. As stewards of this public funding that was created through Proposition 10, we operate primarily behind the scenes. We invest in the people, the policies, the services, the programs that are housed within the many agencies in our county and organizations that directly support the children and families growing up here. Please accept my gratitude again for the time that you gave me last week. And let me just go through this PowerPoint. This plan is grounded in the belief that it takes all of us working together to build a community where every family has the support they deserve. As I mentioned, we are a tobacco tax-funded organization, and we can't do this alone, so we need to partner with many in our community to make sure that we enhance and expand what's working for families. Here's a little bit of a dashboard for what it looks like for children ages zero to five in our county. There's about 88,000 zero-to-five-year-olds. Thirty-five percent of three- and four-year-olds are enrolled in preschool or TK. Ninety-eight percent of children with health, have health insurance, and eighteen percent of children in working families for whom a licensed childcare space was available, isn't, only eighteen percent of children have access to a childcare space in 2023. So we have our challenges in our county in terms of what it looks like to have a baby in that age space. Here's the framework for First Five Fresno County's strategic plan, why we show up, how we show up, and where we show up. You'll see that our vision and mission guides why we show up. The roles is how we show up in our community. And then the focus areas are where we show up. Here's our vision and mission. We envision a future where young children and their families are healthy, loved, and nurtured. And we pursue this vision by partnering with, advocating for, and investing in our community to create that seamless of quality, accessible services that support the well-being of every child and family. And one of our main values is that we are a piece, not the whole of our solution, and that we prioritize sustainable solutions that build on our locals' strengths, excuse me. Here's our roles, as I shared with you during my meetings. We, our big, our big three roles as feedback received from our community. We partner, we are a partner, we're an advocate, and we're an investor. And you see that the investor role is more towards the bottom, bottom now. We've been around for 27 years now, and our revenue continues to decline. So more reasons for us to figure out ways to partner with our community, to leverage our resources, to be an advocate, so that we raise the way that children or the families raising children are seen and supported in our community. And finally, that we use our dollars to invest as best as we can to contract and leverage local, state, and federal funds coming into our community. Okay, our focus areas haven't changed so much. In our last 27 years, we focus on maternal, child, and family health. And here are some of the ways that we try to make sure that we increase positive birth and health outcomes for our families and for our children. We support thriving families, so anything that we could do to strengthen the proven factors that make a difference in the lives of families in our community. And then also the early learning support that we do for childcare providers and the quality of care that is received by the children that are growing up here. That concludes my presentation. Let me see. I wanted to make sure that, tell you that where we, we end where we began. This plan is grounded in the belief that it takes all of us, and we're grateful for the opportunity to partner with the county and the county departments, to build a community where every family here has the support they deserve. This concludes my presentation. I'm here for any questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being, putting it together and getting it done in a timely manner. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Uh-oh.
Thank you. No, no questions. I just want to thank Fabiola and, and thank Supervisor Pacheco. He was at the helm of, of that commission for, I believe, eight years. Did a great job. The team over there does an amazing job at serving our, our community, particularly our kiddos, zero to five. And I just want to publicly thank Fabiola for your leadership and your team over at First Five. And I'm, I'll make the motion to receive the report if necessary.
Do I need to go to a public comment? Is there any public comment on this matter? Hearing none. I got a motion and a second. All in favor, is my saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now move to item number eight, under Public Health. Receive presentation of Department of Public Health on the two-year pilot project with the Departments of Public Health, Social Services, and Behavioral Health, and the San Joaquin Valley Free Medical Clinic and Needle Exchange, a 501(c) nonprofit organization for the Whole Person Harm Reduction Program. Make a determination that the use of the county-owned office and medical space at 1221 Fulton Street by San Joaquin Valley Free Medical Clinic and Needle Exchange, a 501(c) nonprofit organization, to provide health services and harm reduction treatment to residents of the county, will receive public purposes, and it is in the best interest of the county and the public pursuant to government code section 26227.
Good morning, Chairman and fellow members of the board. Joe Prado, interim director for the Fresno County Department of Public Health. Before your board today is providing an update on what your board approved back in 2023. It was a Whole Person Harm Reduction Program. So we're going to give you an update on how that has come along. And I just kind of want to note some of those, why, why did we do this? What was the purpose of this? It was really to address the opioid crisis in Fresno County, and also you're seeing that throughout the entire nation. We wanted to be able to bring these services, comprehensive services, into one location. Something was mentioned in your board back in 2023 was to provide these services with dignity and respect. And so we took that charge completely and wholly as, as we started working with Dr. Lasher and his team to implement that program in the Public Health Department. So we evaluated how they were operating, and then how we could add some additional services there. The overall outcome, we saw some consistent public health benefits. We also saw some challenges. And we also were attempting to do this with the minimal county burden, financial burden as well. And so we're going to get into a little bit of what that looked like this past month here. Some of the key findings and challenges were persistent chronic homelessness, participation, pathways to recovery, and integrated care. This particular one, it really evaluating Dr. Lasher and his team's workflow processes, and really trying to update those as we went, went through that. Community feedback was very key in understanding us adding this type of service to the downtown area. And then being able to do a return on investment, significant taxpayer savings and cost efficiency, have some information for you today as well. And then the comprehensive social support that were added through some other county departments as well. And so as we move forward into the persistent chronic homelessness, we identified 52% of the individuals coming through the Harm Reduction Program, every Saturday were homeless. That's approximately 130 people every Saturday on average we've seen attend this program. And so there's already services that the team had put into place. Food, clothing were in there. And so as you walked into our building, there's a check-in process, you have those immediate services. But as you walk deeper into our building, you then have the comprehensive, the social services, the medical, and some other services there as well. There was a patient navigator there to help with housing, drug treatment, and other needs as well. So this has been really all in one location, and really steps away, every participant is only steps away from it. Next slide. Pathways to recovery and integrated care. So there is something on really getting drug treatment started onsite. And that was something that Dr. Lasher and his team were able to do. And we successfully enrolled 327 individuals in drug treatment through, in 2024. As we started looking at this model here, the drug treatment includes a medical detox period, a prescribing of medication, and ongoing medical follow-up to taper the patient off the medication, and behavioral health services. Another benefit of having our public health staff onsite every Saturday, whenever we saw a pregnant woman enter the program, we have public health nurses that actually that work on Saturday as well, we're able to look at them and offer our home visitation services to them as well. Again, a one-stop shop, an immediate impact and referral as we saw this here. We also added flu vaccine services on Saturdays as well. So that was another benefit we saw, we're having one location for this. Next slide. When, back in 2023, some of the comments that were, there were some concerns by our community, and some of the comments that were made, that this would increase the homeless population in the downtown area, that there would be lots of syringes around our building, around our areas. Those are some of the concerns. We did not take those lightly. We actually contracted out with the Downtown Fresno Partnership, and we, they conducted a survey of the homeless population around a six, 600-foot radius of our building. And they were able to take account two days out of the week to see whether or not there was an increase in the homeless population. In addition, with that, we contracted with Pavarello House. We wanted them to engage the homeless population and start asking questions as far as, why are you in downtown? Or what is, what type of services do you need? And 68% of the people that Pavarello spoke with said they had been in downtown prior to January 2024. They liked downtown because of the amount of resources in the downtown area. So this type of surveys that we conducted during this time period helped us to really assess, was there an increase of homeless encampments and things of that nature? And we did not see that in those data points there. In addition to that, we did a public records request, and we looked at police data. And we looked at police data within our, around our building as well. And we were able to assess that there wasn't any increase in loitering or anything else around our building during that review time of the Public Records Request Act as well. So we were able to address the community concerns there. We also had a survey that we partnered with Downtown Partnership to get out to the business owners, to speak to them if they had any concerns about the program, to go ahead and send us any of their comments. We haven't received any comments from business owners from downtown to date. Next slide. You know, looking at a return on investment, taxpayer savings and cost efficiency, this calculated return on investment is complicated. There are so many factors in how you could do this. So we did some research, and we found the Journal of American Medical Association of Psychiatry in 2021. They provided some, some good figures on what to look at. They said that the actual savings was some medical costs and some criminal justice involvement. For the lifetime of a participant in a medically assisted therapy was approximately a range from $25,000 to $105,000 per person. So we went and looked at that, and we didn't go for $105,000 calculation. We went for $65,000. And, but we didn't apply that $65,000 to the entire 327 people. We just looked at, we took at a 28% retention rate, and we were able to calculate that out. That was a big calculation of the 5.9 million of that 6.3 million you see on the board there. And so the other 400,000 was calculated looking at local costs of our downtown hospital. What does it cost to actually go into the emergency room for incision, drainage, and provide some of those services? And so that's where we were able to get those other costs. The limitations to the JAMA Psychiatry Journal was really, they did not account for incarceration costs. The criminal justice system was really going through the court system and things of that nature. They did not account for HIV treatment and some other aspects. So there was, like any data point, any study, there's always limitations to that. But that's how we calculated that 6.3 million that's on the, on the board there. And then what did it cost us as the Department of Public Health? That is a 90, what you see in your board packet, 90,760. That's our staff time. We have two staff members there every Saturday to make sure all the protocols are followed, everything is being managed efficiently and effectively. The, the Harm Reduction Program runs from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and then they're finishing seeing clients between 1:00, up until 2:00 PM. So that is important for our staff to be there. Those costs also include those contracts with Downtown Partnership and also with Pavarello House. Next slide. I just want to really thank the Department of Social Services. They're there every Saturday, and they've got a line of people coming in, and they provide excellent service. They've served 844 individuals. As you can see, the main request that people are coming in for is Medi-Cal, CalFresh, General Relief, and employment and training. So again, they are literally steps away from being able to address all these issues in one, every Saturday afternoon. I really, really applaud the Department of Social Services and their, and their collaboration with this. And in conclusion, our recommendation from the Department of Public Health is to, before your board, is a five-year extension of the lease agreement and a services agreement with a, also with a opportunity to evaluate this program on an annual basis. And when, if goals aren't being met, or if it's not cost efficient anymore to conduct this program, to issue the vendor a 30-day notice if need be. So that is before your board today for consideration. Available for any questions. I also want to introduce Dr. Lasher. He would also like to say a few words.
I thought I put it on mute. I'm sorry. First of all, thank you so much. I'm Dr. Lasher. I'm the medical director of the San Joaquin Valley Free Medical Clinic and Needle Exchange. Again, I'd like to thank you, all of you, for putting your trust in us to take care of a very high-risk population, a very hard-to-reach population. And, and during this period of time of the 20 months that we were, we've been housed in the Health Department lobby, we've been able to do some ma, major developments. One was to make very accessible what we call our low-barrier opiate treatment program, and also other substance use. We went before from just treating a patient over and over again for infections and saying to them, doesn't it seem like you should be in treatment? This is having some major wear and tear on your body, and you might not live long. Now we provide this service very much upfront. It was something that our county district attorney mentioned when she visited our site. She didn't see much in the way of offering treatment. Well, we took those words to heart and appreciated you, Mr. Redefield, and the, the district attorney coming down to see what we actually do. So thank you for coming down. The other thing that we developed in this period of time, so besides its access to substance use, is also developing an electronic health record, in which the numbers that you're being able to receive are actually come out of our records. And so it was with the help of And so it was with the help of the county that we've been able to develop an electronic health record for us to be able to make referrals and also have record and also have data to show what we've been doing. One thing I would like to close in my introductory remarks, and I'll answer whatever questions you have, there was a mother that came and brought her son, and this sort of sums up a lot of the, the atmosphere and what, what goes on there. And she said, you know, I've brought my son to the Needle Exchange many times when you were in the cul-de-sac behind Roding Park. And this time, we actually asked him that if, if he was going to go into, we would offer medication if he would go into a program because he failed outpatient treatment. But we were willing to give him medication if he went into a program and we weren't willing to give him a prescription before he went into program. Instead, he brought his mother to have safekeeping of the medication until he went in. She said, it was so different this morning when my son asked me to take me to the Needle Exchange at the Health Department. What a difference in her head, in the patient's head, and in the head of us in the community that we're in the Health Department providing treatment, easy access, low barrier. So again, I'd like to thank you so much for the trust that you've put in us for the last 20 months, and hopefully we can continue.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay.
Dr. Lasher, the work that you do as a volunteer that you've done for decades, I think, is very much commendable. And I appreciate the individuals who've come in, who've had boils that needed to be treated, individuals who needed to go into the emergency room, didn't realize it, that you've saved. So all of that is, is commendable. Where I am hard-pressed on this issue, and I've shared this before two years ago, is for me, there is a fine line between providing assistance and then enabling. And some questions that I have, and this might be for Dr. Prado, or it could be you, Dr. Lasher, is how do we measure success in this program?
Okay. Well, one is keeping people alive in a very dangerous situation. We, one of the first tables coming into the lobby that people meet is where they get Narcan. And we ask them, do you need, do you need Narcan? And we actually give them the Narcan, Narcan, Naloxone is the generic term. And we give that to them, it's an, it's the antidote for an overdose, it's what's used in the emergency room on, on ambulances. After we actually give them the Naloxone, then we ask, have you used this before and have you used it since, you know, since you reported any previous ones, new overdose uses? And on an average, we give out on an average every week about 75 boxes nasal spray, Naloxone. We hear back after the patient already has it in the hand, there's no incentive to, for them to tell us anything different than what actually happened. We get back on an average 15 to 20 overdose reversal reports each week. And I tell our pre-med students, our med students, our residents, that you're saving as many lives, maybe even more, than all the cardiology suites throughout the valley.
Yeah, if I could add to that supervisor, with the Narcan, what we noticed from prior year to this year, just more effective utilization of the Narcan to where we were, gave out less Narcan, but we noted more reversals overall. So I think it's important as we think of these resources that we're managing, where we're effectively managing throughout that. I think just to add to those pieces is those emergency, emergency room visits are very key in this program. So I think there's a great opportunity, and for us, this is going to be a room for improvement, is collecting data at the patient level and looking at emergency room utilization in the future. If this board approves this to move forward, we would need to obtain the necessary consents from the patients to, for us to do a deeper dive analysis to see what that local impact could look like.
Some other questions that I have, I think you indicated that when this program started in 2023, you've been averaging 130 people a week that come in and receive services, is that correct?
So 130 people a week in 2024. Previously, that number was higher. So previously, when it was at Roding Park, we saw a 43% decrease in the amount of people coming to the downtown, to the public health area for services.
The reason I ask this question is homelessness has increased according to the point in time count from 2023 to 2025. You acknowledge that?
I, I'm not an expert in homelessness, I would have to defer to somebody else on homelessness.
Amina, where is Amina? I think she's here. Amina, so looking at the PIT count from 2023 to where we were in 2025, has homelessness increased or decreased according to the PIT numbers?
Regionally, it has increased unofficially because HUD hasn't certified our number, but it has increased about 10%.
Okay. And the reason I wanted to raise this issue up is getting back to how we measure success. So for me, I think keeping people out of the emergency room is good. For me, how I measure success is getting people, helping people become clean, not prolonging, you know, people through suffering. Doctor, you indicated that success is keeping people alive. For me, I want to help people live, and there's a differentiation between the two. The services you provide are amazing, but the, the issue of handing out needles, I'm challenged by, and even other instruments used to take drugs like crack, crack pipes, even though by doing that, it helps to reduce the transmission of diseases. So that's, that is where I struggle. And then without having data that shows that the homeless population is actually being reduced because we're helping people become clean, I'm further challenged just individually. And so these are some of the things that I was hopeful back in 2023 when this pilot program started, even though I was opposed to it then, that we would have here today. And I haven't seen, I haven't seen any of that, at least in this material here. I am very supportive of the Department of Public Health providing healthcare to people. And so if this program continues on and that's all we're doing and we're not passing out needles, I'm fully supportive of it. To the point about helping people live, we talked about in God We Trust not that long ago, where my heart breaks, I believe that the faith community, and not, not just any single faith, but the faith community should be working right alongside with you to help people get enrolled into programs where it's, whether it's Celebrate Recovery or programs to break some of these habits that they have, challenges they, they have. So I think that there are opportunities for more groups in our community to come together to try to help save people and help, help people live again.
One other, you know, criteria is how many, how many people are now in, in treatment through our low-barrier treatment? And it's, our numbers are more like 367 have entered into treatment, there's approximately 100 that are continuing in treatment at this point in time. So how do we measure efficacy? That's another way, again, and this was, you know, that came from the visit that you and District Attorney came out to visit us and her comment, we took it to heart.
Okay. Done.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to go to the public, the time, we're going to have public comment. So if you want to do public comment, get in line. Go, go ahead.
Yeah, hello, my name is Dallas Blanchard. I'm the Program Manager and Chief Financial Officer of the Needle Exchange Program. And in a news story last Friday, it was mentioned that we have no data backing up anything we have to say. If you go to our website, there's over 40 studies with links proving the effectiveness of our program. Also, it was mentioned that our, our funding is tax dollars. 80% of our funding comes from opiate settlement dollars, not tax dollars. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Elliot Balch, CEO of the Downtown Fresno Partnership, good to be with you. Our organization hasn't taken a position on the clinic or the extension of the lease, but did want to share a couple of observations with you from our work with the county, with Dr. Lasher. At the, at the origination time a couple of years ago, appreciated in their outreach, where the initial plan was to establish the clinic on Saturday afternoons, we were able to kind of interface and the county and Dr. Lasher agreed to move the clinic to Saturday mornings, when the difference being a time when our businesses are all open on that block to a time when mostly businesses are not open in the area. And so wanted to share that observation appreciation. And then as Mr. Prado shared, we have been pleased to work with the county, with the department on data collection to the best of our ability, and, and you see that summarized in the staff report. The findings is, you know, summarized, do, do match our anecdotal observation, what we hear from business owners when we ask about the impact, that they're, that they're not seeing a major impact in the immediate area. So with that, thank you.
Okay. So if you're going to talk, you better be in line now. Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Clarice. You know, this is such a complex problem, there's no simple answers, but I just urge you to let the Needle Exchange continue. I don't have any skin in this game, I'm not a drug addict, I don't know any of them, but I am a resident of Fresno County, and I certainly don't want to see, you know, dirty needles on our trails and whatnot. So I think this exchange helps in so many ways for the health of the people that are unfortunately using drugs. Sounds like this program is really helping in that respect, but I think we can't moralize this away. I don't think taking away the Needle Exchange is going to prevent anybody from using drugs. So I would urge you to continue with that part of it. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Gage Young. I'm a 21-year-old biochemistry student at Fresno State. I'm also a volunteer at the Needle Exchange for about 24, 20 months now, right before the program start, the pilot program started. And I would just like to talk to you about my experience personally as a volunteer, because you've heard the statistics, you've heard the tax dollar savings, you've heard how many people we've helped, you've heard how being in the Public Health Department allows us to collect resources in one spot, like social services. You've heard the research and development portion of it, allowing us to be in the Public Health Department has allowed us to start getting numbers, the statistics to present to government bodies and let us develop our treatment program that we, to get people And volunteering at the Needle Exchange is actually what made me find my passion for medicine. I have a business administration degree from Fresno City. And I learned about the Needle Exchange from a community involvement class. And these 20 months have really felt like a lifetime compared to the 30 years that it's been operating, just from how much I've changed as a person. You know, when you become a volunteer and assistant and assist Dr. Lasher, if you end up taking a note for a patient on their history and present it to them, you know, I've seen countless volunteers be like, this is a 43-year-old patient who's coming in today doing this. And Dr. Lasher will stop you and say, wait, what's their name? Tell me their name. And he's just a really great person in teaching us how to really view the community as people rather than patients, and move from a book knowledge to just a person knowledge, just really learn how to help the community. And being at the Public Health Department has been valuable experience in learning public health policy, viewing patients as people and not just numbers on a screen, and learning how to bridge the gap for underserved communities. Thank you.
Hello. I wasn't necessarily planning on speaking, but sitting in support, but I do want to address something that is really important in effectively addressing our unhoused issue is understanding, I recognize that we are dealing with increases in homelessness and people being unshut, learning stuff, but we do not want to have incorrect correlation, causation from correlations, I mean correlations made regarding the numbers. And there is a lot of documentations that you have seen just in today's meeting with the housing element, as well as the five-year consolidated plan, that went into detail on what the vulnerabilities that communities are facing regarding housing, what is causing vulnerability to losing housing. And none of these was this, something that was a major feature, but things regarding rising costs, potentially losing housing for other reasons, particularly with those who are elderly, with a, there is, there's a multitude of things that are outlined in a 2023 UCSF report, state report on the major causes and of homelessness and being unhoused. And certainly, there are, for some, the issues are related to this, although based on the PIT count as well as all reports nationally and statewide, those who, to which, those who are dealing with issues regarding substance use are the minority, like 33 or below or something like that, those who, that was part of what they were dealing with that got them into situations even further. And I'm not, as much as, as far as everyone else, I would ask that you listen to them. But the issues that are causing people to struggle with finding housing are diverse, and a lot of it is based on struggles with housing, even those who are, you know, who have gone into drug treatment, who don't have a place to go to afterwards. And that makes, so I, I, but I feel like more than anything else, I just want to mention that we cannot make false correlations over the increase of what's causing that and connect it with this, but more importantly, listen to those who just spoke to the report, to the work, to the data, to everything that has been said before here, and those who have been working with, in this program, and take that and, and support the continuation of this.
Hi, everyone, my name is Michaela, and I'm a recent volunteer at the Needle Exchange on Saturdays. Just from being there in my short time, I have witnessed the benefit that Dr. Lasher has provided to our patients, our attendees, and just the local community. I've learned so much and I've had personal conversation with our patients, and they've talked about how they have sought out treatment for drug abuse for other locations and have been denied, and have found Dr. Lasher and how their lives have changed, how they have grown, how they've started families, how they are no longer reliant on these drugs, and it is because of Dr. Lasher's work and the effort provided by the Needle Exchange Clinic. Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name is Riley Telford. I'm here in support. In short, Supervisor Max, I want you to contrast not providing the service. When you contrast not providing the service, who do the people turn to? When they're using drugs, you're using needles, whatever, they go back to their providers that get it. They go to areas where they can collectively pool and share needles and things of that nature until they're no longer usable, then they become discarded. They're left in our parks, they're left in our city streets, they're left everywhere, exposed to our children, exposed to anybody. And that creates more health hazards and issues for everyone. In contrast to them coming to a clinic where they actually have people that care, that are concerned about their well-being, about getting better, and is offering them services and information to help get them through their addictions. I contrast that as a need, that you cannot quantify the value in that, and who are you making that touch with? I take that with a sinner that's out there that's living their life, they're doing their thing, and they pass by churches, if no one brings them in, they just continue to do the things they do. But they have people that talk to them, they have other Christians or whoever, whatever their belief is, that talk to them, that try to bring them in and get them information. Because eventually, when they're getting the information, they're getting help, they're getting help through healing in their heads and their minds and their bodies and their souls. So for that reason, I stand in support of continuing to allow these folks to continue the services that they're offering. And I believe that any religious organization that wants to assist, partner, or to volunteer time can be another touch, then I'm sure they're welcome to accepting them in. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley.
Good morning. John Zanoni, Sheriff of Fresno County, Chairman Mendez, members of the board. As I give this, I will take into account what Supervisor Pacheco said regarding in God we trust, to have respect, dignity, and have a peaceful presentation. I do not support the portion of giving away the needles and the drug paraphernalia to individuals. I did some research. It's not necessarily just a one-for-one exchange. Apparently it's a need-based and you can get more than that. I have concerns with people I've talked to along Blackstone Avenue and I'm not saying this is from the Needle Exchange specifically, but we have a lot of needles out in our community. We have needles in the, in the parks and the dugouts over at the Fig Garden Loop Park. We have needles up and down Blackstone. When we do our homeless encampment cleanups for part of the civil unit with the sheriff's office, many times our employees or deputies have to wear special shoes or boots out there because there's so many needles and syringes at these. So I challenge to find a better way to, when it comes to the needle and the drug pipe portion of this, the paraphernalia. I do appreciate the medical care, the prevention, the drug treatment. Those are extremely important that you are doing through this program because that's what we have to do to help people. As far as the harm reduction, I've been a big part of the fentanyl awareness campaign here in Fresno County. And if you know, we've reduced fentanyl-related deaths from hundreds down to, you know, into the 70s and 80s. And that's been done through education, prevention, and awareness, not facilitating drug use, not encouraging it. And I'm not saying that they're necessarily encouraging it, but when you hand people out needles and crack pipes, you're giving them an avenue to go do drugs. I get it, maybe they would use a dirty needle, they would share needles and things like that. But the reality is, is that when we look at something like Prop 36, we really got to figure out what we're doing because Prop 36 is about drugs, it's about the unhoused and homeless, and it's about retail theft. Well, all of those have one common thread with not everyone, but a portion of it, and that is drug use. And by handing out needles and crack pipes, we're giving people an avenue to use drugs. And I think as a sheriff, my focus is how do we get people to stop using drugs, to reduce crime, and improve the quality of life of people in our community? And I think that we need to focus on not using taxpayer dollars for that, but can we spend this taxpayer dollars better and focus more on treatment, more on rehabilitation, and getting people into these programs and helping them get off drugs? I can see the side with the doctor here where they come in and you build that trust with them, but at what cost? Because let's face it, people who die from fentanyl overdose, that's harm. Drugs harm your body, whether it's alcohol, tobacco, or whatever it is. Drugs are harmful, so we should not be using taxpayer dollars to help facilitate and encourage drug use. Thank you.
So bring it back to the board. Brian, did you?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, I would respectfully disagree with you a little bit with that. I understand your position as a law enforcement officer, but if you think there's a lot of needles now in this and watch, watch what happens. And I would, again, I would look at the thousands of dollars that we've already tried for a broad-based drug use program and how successful has that been? I, two years ago, I supported this program and for 30 years, the man in blue sitting here in front of us, Dr. Lasher and his fellow physicians, the medical students and the volunteers have provided free medical care to those that have substance issues and truly, truly need help. And until two years ago, this program was in the streets. And I know about it firsthand because it was in the cul-de-sac of the Farm Bureau building that when I graduated from college, I attended the Farm Bureau and I would hear about this every month when we'd go to our meeting about what they're doing in the cul-de-sac. So I can tell you, growing up, I had a negative connotation on this from all of the perceptions that you hear, that we had heard, and I'd never witnessed it firsthand. However, when I was elected on a chance encounter, a friend of mine said that on the next day, it was the Friday event, said she was going to the Needle Exchange program. And I said, you're what? She says, yeah, I go and I volunteer. And I says, why would you do that? And she said, have you ever been there? And I said, no, I haven't. I've heard about it, but I've never been there. And she says, maybe you should come. So on that weekend, I went. And I can tell you, it opened my eyes and all the negative perceptions I had, it changed. And there's a lot of good that goes on there. And I believe we're not going to change people's habits, although Dr. Lasher has convinced over 300 to seek treatment, but the people that are going to do drugs are going to do drugs anyway. We're just simply, they're preventing needles, in my opinion, going all over. They're cutting down the dirtiness of the program, of the needles going over, and they do that. And so, in my opinion, these are the true public servants. They don't ask for money, they don't ask for gratitude. The sheriff, again, made a misstatement, as Dallas corrected. The only public money is a minimal and we're going to account for that anywhere, whether we have heating and air conditioning, we have our own security, all that, whether the programs are or not, we're still, we're still paying for that. And they don't, my greatest thing is they don't look down on people because they're going through difficult times. They look them in the eyes as a person stated and said, how can they help? And because they are medical professionals on site, they offer minor medical procedures and services and they had all kinds of stats. They help people. And to me, the greatest savings is our ER is overwhelmed on a daily basis. And if not, go downtown to the ER and see how long it takes to get in and do it during the winter time when it's really sick. He's taken 15 to 20 people out of the ER every week. And for me, in and of itself, that's a huge amount of savings. Now granted, we're not paying the ER bill, but we as a community are. And I know because I served on community board for nine years prior to being a supervisor and I know the cost of an ER visit. And in a normal three-hour Saturday, they exchange thousands of needles or the kits and all that. And again, I want to thank Elliot Polch because he was opposed to this going forward for all the negativity of the downtown business. But again, that's where we work to get along because Dr. Lasher, the program was from noon to three. And to be a good neighbor, he changed it from nine to 12 to avoid those businesses. So I can appreciate Elliot coming here and just saying there hasn't been a big issue because it was a great concern. But again, that's trying to work together. I want to thank the medical professionals and volunteers for what they do each week. For you, Joe, being the intern, it's too bad he couldn't have held on two more weeks and he could have took the arrows today. But you, you did a good job and all the people that help. And Supervisor Maxig, again, I've always, I have great respect for you, but they operate three hours a week. They're not going to move the needle, no pun intended, on reducing homelessness for three hours a week. I think that's a little unfair. And Brandy, while I don't agree with you on many things, I will grant you, I appreciated your incorrect correlation and I just highlighted that for you. Dr. Lasher, again, I have the utmost respect and admiration for you. And I said it two years ago and I'll say it again in public, you are the true public servant, not us up here. What you do every, every Saturday, you help more people than we'll do in a career and you do it for no money. And I personally have great respect for you. I don't agree with the Needle Exchange program. I want to be clear, I don't agree with the pipes. You and I can maybe agree on that point. I asked you a week or so ago, would you be willing to give that portion up? Because if you were to do that, then I think we could maybe get the votes up here that you can continue practice and do your great good and have air conditioning in the summer and heating in the winter time. And you quite candidly told me that you'd rather be back on the street corner because those of us not in the medical field, you know the correlation between the needle exchange and the pipes and all that. But I just want to tell you, Dr. Lasher, I don't believe the vote's going to go your way today. I don't know, maybe I'll be pleasantly surprised. But it's a perception and people have a hard time getting over their perception. If they would visit, and then again, like my colleague, Mr. Bretfield, he's gone, his views aren't going to change and I respect him for that. But if they could just go and see all the good you do. Politics is the art of compromise. So for me, I don't agree with that aspect of your program, but in the art of compromise, like you did for the downtown, I'm willing to accept that because I believe the greater good is greater than the detriment because that's life. There's no perfect world in life, there are no perfect solutions. So again, that's all I want to say until I hear my colleague here to my left. And I would just hope that he would remember patience, peace, and kindness as we move forward. But it is what it is, we're all big boys up here and I'll take whatever's coming. But again, Doctor, my greatest admiration for you and your team. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Brian. And yes, I will be patient and kind and everything else. Dr. Lasher, I also want to say that, you know, I've talked to you on the phone, I've been there. I know you have a good heart, absolutely, there's no question about that. I differ completely about what you're doing in terms of a needle exchange crack pipe program, but I too see you as somebody who has a very good heart and believe in, you believe in what you're doing. But let's get, let's drill down on some things here because there's a lot of, you know, talking ethereally and esoterically in some way. I want to drill down on the facts. First of all, on the fiscal impact, Joe, there are security costs, I want to know what this is costing taxpayers. 2,400 per month, Department of Health, 1,900 per month, program supplies, 1,500 annually, and you come up with a $90,000 figure annually every year?
Yes. So those are direct costs that we incur additionally to run the Needle Exchange program. Those costs are offset through a state grant that we receive.
Okay. But the cost is 90,000. That's all of the county costs, that's the employees?
Department of Public Health.
Okay, 90,000, okay. How many needles are handed out each week?
So needles, what we saw in needles, we also, as I mentioned earlier, there was a 43% decrease in people, there was a 50% decrease in needle distribution. So roughly over the year, you're looking at 400,000 needles distributed over a year.
Okay. Last time I asked, you were handing out 20,000 needles a week, 80,000 needles a month, 1 million needles a year. You're saying that's changed?
Yeah, there's been a reduction in needle distribution and you can also see a reduction in people visiting the Needle Exchange program from previously.
Okay. What do you attribute to that?
You know, Dr. Lasher can provide his opinion. The way I perceive it is that there's a lot of protocols in place when you come to the health department. There's protocols in how we, where we wait, there's a check-in process completely. We're asking if you're a knee transportation services, we ask you for a zip code. We start asking more information than possibly than previously. And so I think we have a population that really is eager to actually possibly go towards treatment and actually engage in these services. And so that's my take from kind of looking and participating and working on Saturdays and talking to the public.
Okay. You don't know if some of those people have just died and they're not coming anymore?
That is true. Do not know that.
Don't know that.
Don't know that.
Okay, and that's a possibility.
Yes.
Okay. So you're handing about nearly half a million needles every year in Fresno County, approximately?
Correct.
Okay. How many crack pipes are you handing out?
We're averaging 150 pipes every week and there is 130 people on average coming in every week.
So what would that be annually? 150, 300, 600? Just about 900 crack pipes a year?
7,800 roughly.
Oh, 7,800. So about 8,000 crack pipes you're giving to drug addicts every year. Who's paying for the needles?
We do not pay for them. Dr. Lasher and his program, they provide all their needles.
Yeah, who's paying for it?
The needles are paid for by the opiate settlement fund. That was the problem that the folks that manufactured OxyContin in the settlement, billions of dollars, money spread out across the states. And those pipes, ever since we started giving out the pipes, our numbers on needles went down. On the average, we were doing about 22,000 needles per Saturday. And now, since we've been providing needles, we're at 8,000.
So that may explain why there's less needles. They're smoking fentanyl with crack pipes rather than injecting it, which is what you want because you feel it's safer.
Correct. And there's a study, I have a copy with me and we could give it to the board, and that was done in January of last year. And in that, it showed, the highlights to that study was that 40, people who injected fentanyl were more, 40% more likely to overdose. Those who injected fentanyl, 253% were more likely to have had an abscess. And those who injected fentanyl spent more time in the hospital, in hospital visits.
Okay. Who's paying for the crack pipes?
The same, the opiate settlement.
Is that taxpayer money?
No, that's a settlement between the drug company that caused the problem with OxyContin and the Shackler family, I think it was Purdue, and the states. And that was resolved with all the attorney generals.
What else are you handing out besides needles and crack pipes? You're handing out, go ahead.
Okay, so we hand out cottons, dental cottons, when people are injecting, they draw it through there for the impurities. We hand out condoms so that, you know, people who protect themselves, you know, safe sex. We also hand out fentanyl testing strips, Xylazine testing strips as well. And we hand out bus passes. We give people two bus passes if they didn't drive them there. We took to heart Mayor Dyer's concern about these people congregating and being downtown. So we give them two bus passes, one to get home and one to come back to clinic. And when we see people across the street hanging out in front of some of the stores, I or some of our volunteers, like Gage who spoke earlier, will cross the street and tell them, the mayor really does not want folks down here.
Okay, so they're getting free bus passes funded by taxpayers to?
No, 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 no. That's money from donations.
Okay. They're getting free bus passes to come and get their needles and crack pipes?
And leave.
And leave. Are you also handing out tie-downs, tie-down?
Yes, we do.
You do?
Yes, we do. And also there's a little cover on the pipe so they don't burn their lips.
Yeah, we don't want them burning their lips when they're smoking fentanyl. Do you give them lighters? Do you give them anything else to inject themselves?
Cooker caps, clean cooker caps in which they can keep their drug use as sterile as possible.
Okay, so they have all the means to continue their drug addiction, you're giving them that. When they come there, do they have to hand in needles to get free needles?
No.
They don't? So it's really, in a sense, not always a needle exchange, it's people who can come and get needles.
Right, we call it a starter kit and we give them enough for a week's usage. And then when they, and we tell them, when you come back, you bring back the used ones. And that was, that's been a big part of the studies showing that needle exchange really does help on the disposal of, say, of used needles as opposed to them being throughout the street.
Okay, so you give them starter kits for those who have not exchanged needles?
Correct, for those who do not come. And most of them do, our numbers show that most do come back bringing needles and there's a margin above that.
What is the return rate? People who come, the 130 that come, how many are truly bringing needles?
Yeah, so I can speak to that. So there's a 1.5 ratio. So for every needle that is brought back, there's 1.5 on average issued out. So there's less than two needles being issued per one needle coming into the program.
Except for those who come with no needles?
Correct.
And with those with no needles, they get a starter kit?
Correct.
And how many needles are in the starter kit?
30.
30, 30 needles.
Yeah, and that's to allow them to inject three times a day for?
How many times a day?
Three or four times a day.
Okay.
That will cover that.
How many total people come through the program annually?
How many what?
People come through your program.
It's approximately. It's approximately a hundred and thirty to a hundred and, it's, right now, it's a hundred and fifty per week.
Okay. And you don't know how many of those are actually new week to week? They could be the same people?
Correct. There's, there's many that we see that we, we recognize and we have a relationship with.
But you don't have that data of how many are new, unique people?
No, I don't have that, no.
Okay. So that could be hundreds, that could be thousands, we don't know. Or it could be roughly the same people that we're giving this to. Okay. So that data point is, is not known, which is an important data point, I think, to know, you know, how many of these are unique people versus ongoing. You have three hundred and twenty-seven people in the medically assisted treatment program in 2024. In that program, are you handing them out a drug, like either methadone or one of the other two drugs that? What is, what are, what are you doing in a medically assisted treatment?
Okay. Well, methadone is not distributed at our clinic. Methadone is highly controlled. It's either in an opiate treatment program regulated by DEA, SAMSA, and the state. So what we provide is buprenorphine. The brand name is better known as Suboxone. And we provide that for opiate treatment. For methamphetamine, we provide an anti, a tricyclic antidepressant medication that helps them get rest so that they have energy in the morning to, to do their day. For alcohol, we provide an anticonvulsant medication to prevent them from going through seizures or delirium tremens and keep them out of the hospital. And for benzodiazepines, we taper them down from the fast-acting, short-acting benzodiazepine to a long-acting, but it's on a taper basis.
What's the follow-up with those patients? Do you follow up with them?
Constantly, constantly.
What if they don't show up?
You know, the, the follow-ups happen, you know, again, low barrier. They either can come to, to the clinic and meet with our doctor that does an amazing job of staying on top of it, or by phone and texting. And so therefore, it's a very low barrier to keep people as opposed to all the hoops that someone has to go through to get into an opiate treatment program, which I work during the daytime. I work at one of those, and I see some of the, so, some of the problems are like insurance, not having insurance, or not having a current ID.
Couldn't have those three hundred and twenty-seven people come to you for treatment without it being a part of the needle exchange? In other words, they recognize they got a problem, they want help?
Correct.
And couldn't they have just come to you and said, "Dr. Lasher, please help me"?
You're right. And if I do stand on a corner being willing to offer that very honestly, I ver, I think I would be bored by not having people coming. But this is, the needles are the, are the calling card. These are people coming in, you know, for, you know, for their problem. They know they have a problem. They also know that they can get help once, once they decide to step out of their addiction.
Well, you and I would respectfully differ on that because if somebody knows they have a drug problem, they, and they could see Dr. Lasher who will help them, I don't think they need the needle, more needles. If they're going to stop using, they're going to come to you and say, "Please help me."
On, on Monday through Friday, I'm avail, I am available. I don't get these people.
Okay. Okay. You referred sixty-three to primary care, meaning what? You send them for some medical treatment?
Yes, we actually will make, our navigators will make appointments. If they don't have, we see people for their high blood pressure, for their diabetes, for their anti, mental health problems. And we get them back on medication and get them an appointment in primary care. So they could be followed up on a regular basis, yes.
And you referred twenty to behavioral health. That's obviously a very ridiculously small number. We don't know if there's thousands of people that have come, or it's the same hundred and fifty or two hundred. But you referred twenty to behavioral health. I guess twenty for behavioral health for what? Additional counseling?
Correct.
What happened to those twenty people? Was there any follow-up? Do you know what happened? Were they seeing a therapist?
I, I think that was in, in one of the, one of the numbers that we presented that one moment.
I don't think there was follow-up because I asked.
Yeah. And so those, I, I think this highlights an opportunity if this program was to continue, for Department of Public Health to get in there and to analyze the data even more at a patient level and to see whether or not there was additional follow-up. But this is also the vision of the county in designing the community, county information exchange. What you're speaking to Supervisor Brederfield is a closed referral. You can refer, but did they actually show up? That is very key in what we're designing in the county information exchange to see whether or not there is actual follow-through.
Well, that's my problem with this whole thing. I mean, there isn't a lot of real data. You don't know how many people are unique. You make a lot of statements about, oh, people are in medical assisted treatment, but you don't know if that's three hundred and twenty-seven out of ten thousand people, fifty thousand people, or sixty people. Same with the twenty referral to behavioral health. You don't know what happened there. You made a referral. Sounds good. But we don't know what happened. You also say that there are six point three million dollars in saving from ER visits. You estimate that from this JAMA study.
So the six, the five point nine million, as earlier discussed, that is the estimate of return on investment through medical and criminal justice costs. So the five point nine million is part of that six point three million.
They base it a lot on this JAMA study, which is a VA study. The study was done with VA patients. They were treated with one of three drugs, buprenorphine, methadone, naltrexone. Then they combine one of those medications with psychotherapy, group counseling, and follow-up contingency management, we call it. The study provided real treatment and intervention, which helps addicts stop using, but they have to be in treatment and programmed to stop with ongoing follow-up and drug use and accountability. Your needle and crack pipe program offered none of the above except more drug usage. It would be equivalent to the researchers in this study handing VA patients the tools, needles, and crack pipes to continue their opioid usage without any of the treatment interventions that were provided in this study. I agree with this study. Treatment is what is needed. Intervention, accountability. Some of the drugs that they talk about, group counseling, that's what's going to get people off these drugs. Instead, you're continuing to facilitate destructive and deadly drug addiction of those who show up to get their needles and crack pipes. In my opinion, it's absolutely insane. It's destructive. It's a misuse of our tax dollars and county resources. Why not just offer the treatment protocols that you have without the needles, the crack pipes, the starter kits, and all the drug paraphernalia?
We wouldn't have access to these people.
I find that hard to believe, Dr. Lasher. I mean, there are people who, when they hit rock bottom, want help. There are drug treatment programs. People are entering those drug treatment programs.
Right. Those are, they're coming in, you know, and, and, and it's great. The light bulb went on for them. But there's a lot of people still out in the street that the light bulb hasn't gone on. And this is a way that they could actually, there was a gal that spoke before the Board of Supervisors here when, many years ago, I think it was like two thousand and one, she said, you know, she's gone through her addiction for all those years, and she graduated from Fresno State, summa cum laude, got accepted into a graduate school in social work. And she says, "I've been able to walk away from my addiction without getting HIV or AIDS or any other debilitating health."
You may have a couple of those successes. Where are the costs? You didn't list the costs in your program for the continued drug usage that you're facilitating. You didn't talk about ongoing police and sheriff calls, the cost for crimes committed by drug addicts that are involved with robberies, property crimes, arson, home invasion, continued homelessness, ongoing medical expenses not treated on Saturdays. Where are the millions highlighted in your report that are spent putting these addicts in jail, provide services in jail because of their addictions, hundreds of millions of dollars? Or the hundreds of thousands of dollars needed to pick up discarded needles in parks, trails, by schools, or homeless encampments? Because I've spoken with the police chief, Mindy Castle. When they do homeless sweeps, there are needles everywhere. In my district, when I was on the city council, there were needles in the park, by Kaiser Park. They're in the trails. And to think that these folks are just coming and they're just exchanging needles and hanging on to all the dirty needles and getting free needles as though this is just some clean program is absurd.
Yeah. The focus of the research was on the actual program itself and the participants. The type of study you're describing, Supervisor, that is a different type of budgetary allocation to really do a deeper dive. And I would definitely want to partner with our Department of Behavioral Health to really formulate the hypothesis and really dive deep into what that actually could look like.
Yeah. And I agree with you. There are a lot of programs that we need to, to be engaging in to really help people stop the addiction because that's really what we need. You mentioned on the persistent chronic homelessness, we need, quote, broader systemic housing solutions. No, I don't think we need that. I think we need drug addicts to stop using drugs so they can become accountable. You can't put drug, drug addicts in apartments and homes. They burn them down. They're in, in the throes of their addiction. It's not a housing problem. It's a drug addiction problem. If you could, I'd like to put up a couple of pictures, Danny or city clerk. Can you just hit the light back there just for a second so you can see this? Okay, that's fine. So this is the safer crack smoking. Please go just through. This is, this is what this program is about. Okay, it's doing this. Go ahead. It's injecting this. This is what this program is facilitating. It's giving them crack pipes to smoke crack, fentanyl. It's police calls. And it's despair and destruction. That's what facilitating, you can turn the lights on, facilitating this program is about. Thank you. I don't have any more questions. I just have some comments, and then I'll wrap. As a clinical psychologist for thirty-five years, and I served for thirty-five years, I've worked with people who've had substance abuse issues and been involved in substance abuse treatment programs for many years. I know what it takes for drug addicts to stop using drugs. It takes accountability, commitment to sobriety, and leading a drug-free life. It involves intense drug treatment, programming, the exact opposite of what is offered with the free needle exchange and crack pipe program. With that program, there's no accountability, just facilitation of drug usage. This lack of accountability is made even worse due to Sacramento radical politicians weakening every criminal law, including drug use laws. Not long ago, if you had a drug problem, you were not allowed to live on the street as you are today. You were required to enter a drug program, or you went to jail and got cleaned that way. Now Sacramento allows you to live on the street and use drugs. You're allowed to commit crime and mayhem. There's no consequences because of Prop forty-seven fifty-seven, AB one oh nine, and no bail policies. What makes this insanity worse is that every Saturday, right here on Fulton Street in downtown Fresno, with the assistance of county staff, county tax dollars, and the use of a county building, this, the, there is a needle exchange and crack pipe program. In our county building, they hand out, okay, it's not twenty thousand, it's ten or fifteen thousand needles to drug addicts every week within a couple hours. There's a half a million needles every year. Half a million needles handed out to hardcore drug addicts to shoot up heroin, meth, fentanyl, crack, et cetera, funded by taxpayers. When constituents in every one of our districts find out that these numbers of needles are being handed out to drug addicts, and they fund it with their tax dollars and county resources are being used, they're outraged, and rightfully so. If you don't believe me, ask them. Not only are half a million needles being handed out every year, they also hand out with county support, drug paraphernalia, tourniquets, cookers, straws for snorting drugs, and now crack pipes. And they use the crack pipes because they want to encourage the chronic drug user to smoke fentanyl rather than shoot it in their veins because it's safer. They also give them narcotics should they overdose with all of these dangerous drugs. So to the taxpayer, unbeknownst to them, they're funding the ongoing drug usage of addicts, criminals, and the homeless. Complete insanity and the misuse of county resources, county staff, and county tax dollars. And the police chief knows it, the sheriff knows it, and the people in law enforcement know it. The problems with this program and giving out crack pipes are many. It facilitates and promotes the drug uses. It promotes acceptance of IV drug uses. Taxpayers should not have to pay for needles, pipes, drug paraphernalia for this dangerous and reckless program. And more contaminated needles are found in parks, by schools, and streets, trails, and alley. And to say it's not as though they're coming and they're bringing their dirty needles is absurd. There is no mechanism in this destructive program to force or compel the drug addict to get treatment. In essence, the county's enabling them to continue their drug usage. There is no accountability. Without any accountability or consequences for these destructive behaviors, you get more of the same behavior, and it only worsens. Despite the fact that this region is known for its rampant use of meth, fentanyl, and other dangerous drugs, Fresno County, through their participation in this program, is in essence enabling this destruction. It only results in more despair and horrific outcomes. The bottom line is government in this case, as in most cases, is not solving the problem. It's simply subsidizing it. And we know when government subsidizes something, you get more of it. In this case, for over thirty years, this program has operated initially in the shadows outside Roding Park. And the county, more recently, two years, got involved in providing resources. In thirty years, this crack pipe and, and needle exchange program has only grown like other government programs, although you are reporting a reduction, probably because they're using the crack pipes. The proponents of this destructive program touted as a harm reduction program. But here are the facts. One, there's no credible scientific study showing that the program stops drug usage. None. Two, they have no real data providing, proving that they are saving six point three million dollars in ER visits. It's a made-up estimate. In fact, they avoid the real cost of this program that supports ongoing addiction, crime, incarcerations, hospitalization, break-in, calls for service from sheriffs and police, arson, robberies. It goes on and on. The people in law enforcement have to deal with this problem. That's why Sheriff Zanoni spoke to it, and that's why Chief Mindy Castro opposes this. There are, however, more effective solutions. The county has substance abuse programs for those that really want treatment. There are methadone clinics for those that really want to stop using. The needle exchange and crack pipe program only continues their addiction. It doesn't treat it or end it. If the addict truly wants to stop using, there's real treatment available. Our constituents expect us to support common sense policies, not use our government resources, their taxpayer money, and county staff to facilitate the ongoing drug usage of meth and fentanyl with drug addicts. The woke radical ideology that we've seen in the county and throughout the nation is ending. Our constituents don't want DEI language in county employment applications. They don't want their tax dollars used to buy rainbow condoms and lube for gay pride parades. They want to enter our county libraries with their innocent and impressionable children and don't want them indoctrinated with gender or any other political ideology. And they don't want county resources or their tax dollars used to support giving half a million needles and crack pipes to drug addicts every year. Other counties have also ended their involvement with these programs because they've seen how harmful they are to their communities. Just some of these counties include Butte County, Sutter County, Placer County, El Dorado County, and Orange County. Many cities throughout California have done the same thing. Fresno County needs to do the same thing to protect our constituents. This crack pipe program, as well-intentioned as Dr. Lasher is, is a destructive program. And I can assure you, a significant majority of our constituents want the county's involvement to end, and it must. I'm making a motion to terminate the lease agreement with San Joaquin Valley Free Medical Clinic and Needle Exchange and to cease using any and all county staff and resources now being utilized in the Needle Exchange and Crack Pipe Program. And if this passes, this program will still continue unfortunately. It'll leave the county building. We can't stop it because the state has said it's legal to do. But the county will end its involvement with it, and the county should. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'm not sure how we ended up touching on a lot of those issues, but Supervisor Brederfield's pretty good at mixing everything together on there. So let, let, let me address this, let me address the optics head-on. Because I think this is, this was like, what I was trying to wrap my mind around when I heard about this issue. It's like, how are we handing out needles? And, and, and Dr. Lasher, I want to thank you for, for meeting with me and, and really letting me know what work you were doing with the community. I met with you. You're not the only one that I met with. I met with other drug-addiction professionals, medical doctors, and folks of that sort. And I want to thank your volunteers for the work that they've been doing. Because I've come to realize exactly what you're doing. You're trying to not just save lives, but trying to provide an entryway for folks to come and actually have that, I'm going to call it the glimmer of hope, for them to try to actually change their life. And we know, having known that personally myself, the face of drug addiction is devastating for our family, for our community. And if nobody's dealt with that, it's very easy to reduce that to just a soundbite. And I don't want this conversation to be reduced to just a soundbite because it's much more complicated and it's much more in-depth. And I want to address the optics issue because I think that's what I wrestled with, and I heard my colleagues wrestling with that too. So the optics are that we're providing, you're providing, because let's be clear, this program, as my colleague said, will go on regardless if it's in a safe environment, the Public Health Building, or it's in a cul-de-sac by Roding Park, or maybe they'll put it up in Woodward Park that Supervisor Brederfield will not, definitely not like. So when we look at, at the optics of what this is, right? And Supervisor Magzik, I shared those same concerns when I was reading through the agenda. But I spoke to some professionals that do this on a daily basis, other than yourself, Dr. Lasher. Not to say that I didn't trust you, but I know you're, you're working hard on your area specifically. When we have folks that are being treated with... When we have folks that are being treated with methadone, that is an opioid drug that is being administered to addicts progressively in a safe environment through either hypodermic needle or orally. Is that correct?
It's orally, liquid, or a tablet. But it's, in, in our methadone clinics, it's oral.
And when, and when you explained it, you explained it that that's how you wean people off of, of this powerful drug, that once it gets its grips into you, it's so difficult for folks to transition out of that cycle, right? The question about the crack pipes, and I don't think they're even selling crack anymore, the, the, the meth, uh, uh, pipes they do, is to bring these folks away from the hypodermic ingestion that you stated has a higher mortality rate for folks that take in fentanyl or meth and transition them so that if they overdose, they have a fighting chance on surviving if they are administered Narcan. Was that, is that part of your treatment?
That is correct. And, and actually, we're, we're trying to get EMS to actually have what we call a leave behind program, that when they respond to someone that overdosed and they gave Narcan, but not only treat them at that point in time, but leave them a box of Narcan in case that they overdose again in the near future, because they're going to continue their drug addiction.
And I want to make sure I understand this right. Earlier, you said that there were about 15 to 20 folks that utilized Narcan in their, you know, trying to save somebody. Is that correct? Was that correct stat?
Correct. It was, uh, every week, um, engaged, one of our volunteers, he brings these numbers forth, that we collect 15 to, approximately 15 to 20 people live, because someone within our clinic was given a box of Narcan that they were able to use on someone else who they associate with.
15 to 20 of those folks that wouldn't have had that, that anecdote, we want to call it, if your program wasn't providing this for them.
Correct, each week.
And then the 369 folks that you actually helped, what kind of medical services were they receiving?
On, on those, that, that's, um, treatment services, that, and that is whether they receive treatment for their opiate use disorder with buprenorphine, or whether it's their alcohol use disorder, they get, um, an anticonvulsant medication, or methamphetamine, an antidepressant medication. So, um, you know, that's the, the 300.
69 of those, of those folks. The treatment that, Dr. Lasher, the treatment?
On the medical side, um, I'm sorry, the 369 on the medical, um, those, most of those are, are related to their drug use. They get, uh, infections of the skin, cellulitis is a major one, when it gets really bad, and abscess, which has to be incised and drained. We used to do about three to five of those every Saturday before the advent of fentanyl and the advent of giving out these smoking pipes. Now, we do, I think, uh, it was, um, 28 for the entire year. So, um, you know, it's.
Dr. Lasher, and I think, I, I want to make sure that the public understands this, because I'm, I'm trying to get a visual, when folks, Supervisor Bredefield, you good? Yeah. It's okay, okay. As, as the, as, as, as the folks that, kill their mics, uh, county clerk. As the folks are going into this building, your program specifically does the needle exchange, where are our folks at when, as an intake process?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the public health staff is on standby, and we're just monitoring, making sure, um, everybody's checking in, all the bikes, all the materials that they come with, they are actually bringing that into the building. We bring everybody into the building, we form a line. So first thing in the morning, there's about 40 people. So they're eyes on making sure that is managing, but they're also walking the floor to make sure there's a good workflow, and they're also managing any type of restroom utilization as well.
And then the medical services happen in the same facility, or?
Correct, yeah. So it's 1,100 square feet that the program utilizes, and so it's towards the back. Our licensed medical clinic is, um, at the back of the building.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm, I'm supportive of continuing the program, um, but I do want to see that data. And I know, Dr. Lasher, regardless of what happens today, you're going to figure out a way of doing your program. I'm hopeful that we can keep it in a public health building where folks can actually come and actually receive services that you just outlined. So I'll, I'll be supportive of that and see where our folks go today.
Okay, Gary, did, did you make a motion?
Yes.
Yes, Gary made the motion.
And the motion is?
Was to deny.
The motion was to deny the, the lease agreement and end to it.
To deny the continuation.
Yes.
I assume you'll second that.
I'll second that motion.
And then we'll see where it falls.
Okay, you want to do roll call?
Okay, I'm sorry, but our, we lost.
I'm good.
Yeah, we're, we're back.
Oh, can I, I'm sorry, when it was all shutting down on me.
Supervisor Bredefield made the motion to deny. Supervisor Magzik seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
The chairman asked for a roll call on that motion.
Okay, here we go. Supervisor Bredefield?
Yes.
Supervisor Magzik?
Yes.
Supervisor Chavez? Supervisor Pacheco?
No.
Chairman Mendez?
Yes.
Three, two, motion carries with Chavez and Pacheco voting no. We now move to item number nine under Public Works and Planning.
Thank you for your support in the past. Okay.
Adopt addendum to Fresno County General Plan, final program environmental impact number 2018031066, certified on February 2024 with adoption of general plan review and date, adopt resolution approving general plan amendment application number 576, updating housing element of general plan, a multi-jurisdictional housing element for six-cycle planning period as county's first general plan amendment for 2025.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Anton Kramer, planner with the Department of Public Works and Planning. Today's item relates to the recommended approval of the Fresno County Six-Cycle Housing Element and Associated Zoning Ordinance text amendment. This item comes to your board with a recommendation for approval by our, your planning commission on a seven-to-one vote. Approval of the recommended actions will bring the housing element into consistency with the general plan. The housing element is one of the required elements of the county's general plan. The housing element addresses the housing needs of all economic segments of the county. The proposed housing element has been submitted to and has received conditional approval from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Having a housing element approved by HCD is critical for the county to remain eligible for housing funds and maintaining local control of land use and building decisions. The six-cycle multi-jurisdictional housing element was a collaboration between the County of Fresno, Fresno Council of Governments, and 14 of the 15 cities excluding the City of Clovis. The six-cycle housing element required the region to plan for 58,298 housing units, broken down by income levels. This is known as the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA. This does not require the region to build or fund, but it does require the region to demonstrate that they, that there is land available to develop or rezone land to meet the requirements. Additionally, the jurisdictions are to have programs to facilitate and the development. The unincorporated area of the county received a total of 2,350 housing units as its RENA allocation. During the process, the county hosted three community meetings to solicit input on the development of the housing element. The draft was made public five times prior to submitting to HCD. The housing element is split into two sections. One is the regional section that covers the entire county, and the other being the appendix that is denoted by a letter for each jurisdiction. The unincorporated county is denoted by the letter A. The regional section includes six goals, including new housing development, affordable housing, housing and neighborhood conservation, special needs housing, fair and, fair and housing opportunities, and energy conservation, and sustainable development. The county section includes an action plan, which has a total of 35 programs, including regional collaboration, emergency supportive and transitional housing, adequate sites, affordable housing development and preservation, removal of government constraints, housing quality, housing assistance, and fair housing. Staff submitted the plan to HCD three times, starting on December 18th, 2023. On June 6th, 2025, HCD provided a conditional substantially compliant letter. Once the housing element and zoning ordinance are approved and adopted, the housing element will be submitted to HCD for their final review and certification. This concludes staff's presentation and recommends the approval of the recommended actions. Staff is here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? I'll go out to public comment on number nine.
Good morning, going into good afternoon. Board of Supervisors, my name is Pedro Martinez. I am with the Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. I'm giving a comment on this item right here. Although we appreciate it, uh, the opportunity to have met with the county staff regarding the housing element, we ask the county to not adopt the housing element plan presented before you today until community identified programs and meaningful actions are, are meaningful actions to the programs are added. In order for the county to meet, uh, to meet its duty to affirm further fair housing, meaningful action must be made to combat discrimination and overcome patterns of segregation, foster inclusivity, uh, foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protective characteristics. Specifically, affirmatively fair housing means taking meaningful action that taken together addresses significant disparities in housing needs and access to opportunity replacing segregated, uh, replacing segregated, uh, correction, um, sorry about that. A little nervous, a lot of, a lot of topics were discussed, right? We're talking God we trust, so this is like how we're trying to take accountability, you know, we mentioned a little bit right here. So by being able to take meaningful actions taken together, this addresses significant disparities in housing needs and access to opportunity, replacing segregated living patterns with truly integrated and balanced living, living patterns, transforming racially and ethically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity. Additionally, we urge the county to do additional community engagement to ensure that residents are able to give feedback and input as such an important document. Additional amendments and feedback from residents, residents will ensure that county adheres to do, to its duty to affirmatively further fair housing. Again, we ask the county to not adopt the housing element plan presented today until the community identified programs and meaningful actions of the programs are taken and are added. We talk about accountability, so this is part of like the accountability that we all have to be able to come in here and be able to address what the community needs. So again, Pedro Martinez, with the Leadership Council of Justice and Accountability, uh, thank you for your time.
Bring it back to the board.
I would move for staff's recommendation.
All in favor, so I stand aye? Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries?
We now move to item number 10, under Public Works and Planning, adopted addendum Fresno County General Plan, final program environmental impact number 2018031066 pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act, Section 15164A.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Anton Kramer, planner with the Department of Public Works and Planning. Today's item relates to the recommended approval of the Biola Community Plan. This item comes to your board with the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission. Approval of the recommended actions will bring the Biola Community Plan into consistency with the general plan. The Biola Community Plan is specific to and focuses on the Biola community. The community plan will expand the community boundary, redesignate land, and include community specific goals and policies. Community plans serve the same purpose as the general plan, except they function at the community level. The proposed new land use diagram is adopted as part of the community plan. The diagram designates all parcels' land use designations. The proposed map expands the community by approximately 12.2 acres, for a total of 213.2 acres. The plan includes a 34-acre reserved site that will include residential and commercial land uses. The county also removed reserve designations from developed parcels and updated the land use to reflect existing uses. With this effort, we are also rezoning 14 parcels in the community plan to bring them into compliance with their physical land use and updated land use designations. County staff developed the plan with input from the Biola Community Service District, residents, landowners, developers, and Fresno County departments. The community outreach process included six community meetings throughout 2024 to discuss topics including planning priorities, transportation, land use, and expanding the community plan boundaries. The county held a 15-day comment period from January 13th, 2025, to January 28th, 2025, during which the county held a public meeting on January 16th, 2025. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff recommends approval of the recommended actions. Staff is here to answer any questions.
Questions from the board?
I don't have a question, Mr. Chairman, but I just want to make a clarification. If I understood this right, items 10 and 11 are to adopt the plans, and if those are approved, item 12 will be the amendment to our, our general plan. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. Think about it as you're taking tentative action on 10 and 11, and then 12 would be the final action for both of those community plans.
Understood.
Right, and they take separate actions.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, they do.
10 and 11.
Correct.
Yeah. Any public comment on 10?
Hello, my name is Radley Reeve. I'm, I live at 557 West Escalon in Clovis. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'd like to read a very short statement into the record. The League of Women Voters of Fresno has submitted two letters concerning the update of the Biola Community Plan. The League has explained why it is inappropriate to prepare an addendum to the 2024 General Plan EIR. Some of the issues raised by the League include the absence of information and the absence of environmental analysis concerning potential impacts identified by various agencies and the expansion of the community's wastewater facility. While in certain circumstances, it may be proper to defer mitigation for identified adverse impacts, it is not proper to defer, to defer the environmental review itself, especially when agencies have identified potential impacts. The county did not engage in any investigation or analysis to establish with assurance that deferred environmental review will be feasible and effective in protecting the environment. In essence, the update of the community plan requires an upfront environmental assessment to identify and analyze potential environmental impacts. And because the county has not provided any detailed written responses to concerns raised by the League, the League is again compelled to ask your board direct, to direct staff to complete an environmental review of the impacts identified by several agencies and the League of Women Voters of Fresno. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will go ahead and submit that statement to the clerk. Thank you.
For the record, Philip Cervantes, um, family's lived in Biola since about 1949, so a lot of history there. I'm also representing the Biola Chamber of Commerce and the Veterans Forum, where we wholeheartedly support this, uh, project or upgrade. I'd also like to thank the county for investing the time, money, and energy to get this done. It's a 50-year-old, uh, we had a 50-year-old master plan before this happened, so it tells me that we are on the map of the county, and we're, we're grateful for that. And I also like to, on, on another note, I don't want to make comments to the, to the gentleman's comments, but I can say that a lot of that work was already done, and there's county staffers here in regards to the public waste, waste treatment plan, et cetera, and the opportunity to grow that. But I also want to, in brief, really thank the county of, uh, Biola has really transformed the last couple of decades, um, and it's been because of the partnership. Biola does not have the resources to do most of the work that has, have been done, and the research. have the resources to do most of the work that has, have been done and the research that it takes to provide the information that a lot of people are asking for. But through the partnership with the county, a lot of that work is being done. And, and it has truly, truly changed the complexity of our community. And I will get into short detail. Graffiti is almost completely eradicated. Crime has gone down immensely. Sidewalks, curbs, gutters, things of that nature, the water treatment plant, clean water, the school. The school fifteen years ago was the worst performing school district, elementary school in Central Unified. Now it's in the top two-thirds, seven out of ten. It, it's right up there and it continues to grow. People become products of their environment. As we continue to change the environment of Biola, we can change the outlook. Our voting census has gone up by almost four hundred percent in our community. People are empowered. Our kids are going to college and graduating from college. Is it a perfect community? No, I don't profess that. Is it a changed and transpired community? Hundred percent. So I want to thank you, the board, for investing in our community, and I look forward to your decision to move forward with this project. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, this is the area that I, I represent. And while the League may have their issues, to me, the real weights and the residents and the people that live there for generations, and you've heard that's in full support, I will make a motion to move this item forward.
Okay. You got a second? All in favor, so I say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried. We'll go to eleven.
Item number eleven, under Public Works and Planning, adopt addendum to Fresno County General Plan Final Program Environmental Impact Number Two Zero One Eight Oh Three One Oh Six Six Pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Section One Five One Six Four A.
The people want this.
Go ahead.
All right. I'll start with good afternoon, as it just switched over. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. Anton Kramer, planner with the Department of Public Works and Planning. Today's item relates to the Delray Community Plan. This item comes to your board with the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission. Approval of the recommended actions will bring the Delray Community Plan into consistency with the general plan. The Delray Community Plan is specific to, to and focuses on the Delray community. The community plan will expand the community boundary, redesignate land, and include community-specific goals and policies. Community plan serves the same purpose as the general plan, except they function at the community level. The proposed new land use map diagram is adopted as part of the community plan. The diagram designates all parcels land use designations. The proposed map expands the community plan by approximately forty point eight acres for a total of three hundred and seventy-four point three acres. The plan includes a twenty acre reserve site that will include residential and commercial land uses. The county also removed reserve designations from developed parcels and updated the land use to reflect existing land use. County staff developed the plan with the input from the Delray Community Service District, residents, landowners, developers, and Fresno County Departments. The community outreach process included six community meetings throughout two thousand and twenty-four to discuss topics, again, including planning priorities, transportation, land use, and expanding the community plan boundary. The county held a fifteen-day comment period from October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four to November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, during which the county held a public meeting on November sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Prior to the Planning Commission, California Rural Legal Assistance, or CRLA, representing a group of residents from Delray, provided comments related to additional community plan policies and changes they proposed. During the meeting, staff, during the Planning Commission meeting, staff proposed two new policies and amended three policies, which were approved by the Planning Commission and are included in the plan as part of the recommended action today. Also, during the Planning Commission, two issues were discussed by the Commission and the public. The first concern pertains to the TCP contamination in the Delray's water supply. Staff informed the Commission that the county has no jurisdiction over the water quality of the community, but it is the responsibility of the Delray CSD. At the Planning Commission, a representative from the CSD informed the Commission that they are in the process of remediation and should be solved by the end of the year. The second concern is over the general plan policy, LU A twenty-three relating to ag land conversion. Staff reported to the Planning Commission that the policy was not applicable at the time, as approval of the plan would not result in conversion of existing ag lands. However, future urban projects would likely be subjected to LU A twenty-three. After the Planning Commission, an additional letter was received by CRLA. In response, staff is recommending the inclusion of one additional policy. The proposed policy would be to the transportation and circulation element. Next. This concludes staff presentation and recommends approval of the recommended actions. Thank you, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Yeah. Any other, any questions from the board? Hearing none, is there any public
Good morning Chairman and board members. My name is Letitia. I'm with California Rural Legal Assistance. We represent members of the community. And so we propose that the community plan should not be adopted until it's amended to include policies that include and support green infrastructure and provide stronger protections for homes that live across the street from industrial facilities. So the community plan serves as a tool to codify best practices and reinforce safeguards that prevent repeating past decisions that placed environmental hazards near vulnerable communities. We have been collaborating with Familias de Delray or, Par del Cambio, or Families of Delray for Change, to draft these policies to address some of these environmental pollutions in the community. Unfortunately, many of these didn't make it in. And while some issues may be addressed outside of the community plan, it is crucial to recognize that the community plans institutionalize the values and priorities at a localized level. This makes it vital that the community plan include policies recommended put forth by Families of Delray for Change. And just to remind you, there, the amendments to the community plan are possible in the future, but the recently adopted general plan, and since you all know that the community plan is part of the general plan, it might be subject to an amendment, but that amendment is not guaranteed. And the last time the general plan was amended before it was adopted recently was decades, decades later. So an amendment may not occur for, for years to come. And a decades-long waiting period for vital protections is far too long, given the ongoing health risks faced by residents today. Therefore, we strongly encourage the board to delay the adoption until these essential health protective policies are incorporated. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name's Victoria Santillan. I work for California Rural Legal Assistance, and I've been working with the community of Delray for about nine years now. And so we have a resident who wasn't able to be present today, so I will be reading and submitting something, a statement on her behalf. Hello, my name is Olga Amaya Silva. I have resided in Delray for over fifty years. I'm concerned with the decline in Delray and what it has sustained in, over the years. My concern is that Delray include, include for, my concern is for Delray to include green infrastructure to be included in the community plan. We need, what we need in Delray is trees, parks, benches, storm drains, and to help, to help prevent floodings and increasing in quality of air and water. It would also help to beautify our community. A major concern of mine has been the number of residents who have developed cancer in our small community. I believe the quality of the air, the environment, and the poor groundwater have been a major factor to these contributions in large incidence of cancer rates in Delray. With an approved green infrastructure, it would benefit our, our underserved community with better water filtration, increasing the quality of the air, help with the effects of global warming and flooding in certain areas, and beautifying our small town of Delray. Thank you for your time, Olga Amaya Silva, a concerned resident
Hello, my name is Maria Reyna. I am a resident of Delray. My family has been a resident since the nineteen forties. My husband's family also has been a resident since like the nineteen fifties as well. We chose to stay there because this is where we wanted to raise our family. Also, with us being there all of our lives, we see the need of the expansion. There is a very dire need for housing. Without the expansion of our, our sphere of influence, we have nowhere to put these people. There's a lot of people from Delray that want to remain there, but there's no housing available to them. As for, I know the group of CRLA represents a group of twelve residents, twelve residents of Delray, rather than the whole Delray. The whole Delray, a lot of the residents from Delray want to see this town grow. There's been stores that have gone down because the lack of residents, the lack of people wanting, being able to stay where they want to build their foundation, because there is not any area to, to build. With this expansion, it was going to allow for apartments, allows for self-help, allow for growth. And with taking this away, there is not going to be that growth. And taking this away, when we're so far into doing this plan, after so many decades of not being acknowledged or not being a part of a community plan update, now that we have the opportunity, it is very unfortunate that there is a group of residents that want to stop it, when this is what we have been waiting for all along. Our school is in jeopardy of being closed down, and that's Delray Elementary, which is a very good school, very family-based, everybody's involved. It's in jeopardy of being closed down because there's not enough residents, not enough students to fulfill that school. And without this expansion, it definitely will be closed down. I'm not saying now, but in a few years, I'm sure it will. So please take into consideration all of these other factors that are going on. And as for the water, I know that the engineer is going to touch basis on that. So those things are also being corrected. Thank you.
Good morning Chairman and Supervisors. My name is Alfonso Manrique. I'm the district engineer. I'm here to speak on behalf of Delray Community Service District. I'm here to be supportive of this community plan, a much-needed element to encourage housing and, and to encourage support growth in the community. But I'm primarily here to give the supervisors an update on what the Planning Commission's comments were regarding pollution in the community, regarding the TCP, the water supply. As, as Mr. Kramer mentioned, there was an update saying that the pollution, the TCP pollution was going to be solved by the end of the year. I'm here to happily announce that it looks like it's going to be solved much sooner than that. One of the wells already have a system in operation. Seventy percent of the water supply of the community is supplied by this well, and it's already TCP-free. The other well will be coming in the next month. So I think within probably a month or, or two, we'll have the TCP pollution problem solved, and the community will be receiving water that is free of, of TCP. So the project is much, is ahead of schedule. Community has a good handle, has a good water supply, has available infrastructure to support growth in the community in the years to come and to accommodate new housing. So this, this committee plan is a good, is a good step, and we support that we adopted today.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. Good afternoon, everybody else. My name is Carlos Arias, and I happen to be the district manager for Delray. I've been the district manager for the last ten and a half years, and I've seen the way our town has been developing. One of the problems that we have is the population of Delray is growing old. The reason for that is the lack of housing. Our youth is moving out of the town because they have no opportunity there. I recommend that we keep on going and accept these changes because we need to expand the sphere of influence from our town in order to survive. Maria spoke about the school about to be closed, because we don't have enough children to go to school. We need to change that. We've seen the progress that we have made with the different aspects of Delray. Crime has been lowering. The problem with the TCP is about to be solved, and we need more, more housing. Businesses are hard to come, and in fact, my wife and I, we own a small business in Delray. But it's hard to be there with the lack of population. We need the growth. We need the growth for, to be now. I know that we are not a perfect community, that there's things that we need to better, but it can be done. And we have proved that for the last ten years. So I will appreciate, and I thank you for having the opportunity to be here and take this in consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Radley Reeve, and I reside at five-five-seven West Escalon in Clovis. I'd like to read a short statement into the record. Over the past four years, the League of Women Voters has submitted four letters concerning the update of the Delray Community Plan. The League has explained why it is inappropriate to prepare an addendum to the two thousand and twenty-four General Plan EIR. Some of the issues raised by the League include the absence of information and the absence of environmental analysis concerning known TCP contamination in the community's water system, the expansion of the community's wastewater treatment facility, and the mitigation of ag land loss through mitigation measure LU A twenty-three. While in certain circumstances it may be proper to defer mitigation for identified adverse impacts, it is not proper to defer the environmental review itself, especially when members of the public have identified potential impacts. The county did not engage in any investigation or analysis to establish with assurance that deferred environmental review will be feasible and effective in protecting the environment. In essence, the update of the community plan requires an upfront environmental assessment to identify and analyze, analyze potential environmental impacts. While some specific details regarding mitigation for individual future projects might be deferred, the overall environmental review and the commitment to address significant impacts cannot be postponed to a time when building applications are submitted. And because the county has not provided any detailed written responses to concerns raised by the League, the League is again compelled to ask your board to direct staff to complete an environmental review of the impacts identified by the League of Women Voters. I will submit this statement into the record, hand it to the clerk. But I would like to make one comment regarding TCP contamination. It exists. That's been acknowledged. It's being worked on, and hopefully that will pan out and the problem will be resolved. However, that information has to be in an environment, in an environmental document somewhere, and it's not there at all. In no document before you is it even mentioned. So therefore, before you proceed with this, please do the right thing and evaluate that, submit it to the community so they can review it, and if it's going to work, all the better. Thank you so much.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm going to make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Second. All in favor, so I say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried.
We now move to item number twelve, under Public Works and Planning, adopt resolution admitting agriculture and land use element as second general plan amendment of two thousand and twenty-five, approving following addendum to Fresno County General Final Plan Environmental Impact Number Two One Zero Two Zero One Eight Oh Three One Oh Six Six Pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Section One Five One Six Four A.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bernardi Menendez, Department of Public Works and Planning. And as mentioned previously, this item here represents And as mentioned previously, this item here represents the formal second amendment to the county's general plan. This would address the formal adoption of the Biola and Delray Community Plans. Staff has nothing further to add and recommends approval of this action item.
Any public comment on this one?
Hello, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chairman, Radley Reap, 557 West Escalon in Clovis. Yesterday, I submitted a letter to Mr. White explaining that perhaps there's a wording problem in this particular item. The item says that the county is going to amend the agricultural and land use element of the general plan, but the two plans you're updating are not in that element. And so, I think you've got a, a simple problem. I'm surprised that, since I emailed this to Mr. White, that you did not correct it. The resolution itself, while it does not mention the agricultural and land use element, it does contain this line, "Be it further resolved that all elements of the general plan previously adopted shall remain in full force and effect except as amended by this resolution." But this resolution isn't going to amend any elements of the general plan. The two community plans are outside the policy document, so I heartily recommend that you change the wording so that it will fit the circumstances. Thank you.
Okay, bring it back to the Board.
I've got to ask, since we have a legal issue that's been raised, so our county council, as the item was noticed and with the comments that were made, are we still able to proceed, or does there need to be any corrections made?
Your Board may proceed.
There you go.
And I would just add that the, the community plans are part of the general plan. In our vision statement, there's an entire list of all of the, the applicable regional community and specific plans. So, it, it is part of our general plan, part of all the various, there's, our community plans are referenced throughout all the various elements of our general plan. So, I too believe that our resolution is still appropriate.
Sure, I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'll second it. All in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, we'll move to item thirteen.
Item thirteen, Board Supervisor Committee Reports and Comments.
Who wants to go first?
I'll go first. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to commend Director Kyle Pennington at the Fresno County Veterans Service Office. He went above and beyond to help assist the PTSD Support Group at the VA and a veteran that needed help with a disability claim. His dedication speaks volumes about his commitment to serving those who've served our county, and I would just want to thank Director Kyle Pennington. Thank you.
Couple of quick items. So, looking forward this afternoon, there's going to be recognition of our county employees who've served twenty-five, thirty, and even fifty years with the county of Fresno. Also, on August twenty-seventh at eleven a.m., we have the groundbreaking for the Clovis Library, which I know the city of Clovis has been patiently waiting for that for almost twenty-five years. And I'll leave another announcement to Buddy for what's going to be happening. August thirtieth and thirty-first, we have Creek Fire Remembrance Celebrations that will be taking place. It's amazing to think that the Creek Fire, we're coming up on the five-year anniversary of when that fire started, and a lot of work remains needing to be done, but we've come a long way as well. August thirtieth, we'll be at the Ball Field in Shaver for that remembrance celebration, and on August thirty-first, that will take place at Hume Lake. So, those are just a few brief comments that I had.
Got nothing. And Nathan was referring to the Reedley Library groundbreaking as the twenty-eighth of August. So, with that, I will move to...
Item fourteen, Board Appointments.
Yeah. Is there any Board? You got one? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reappoint Joe Olivades to the Workforce and Best in Board.
The other? Okay, you're going to make a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second it. All in favor, so I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carried. Move to public presentation. This is for any item not on the agenda and under our jurisdiction.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Riley Tauford, the Chapter President, SEIU Local 521. I'm here today to inform the Board of a practice being utilized by departments that circumvent the Fresno County Code of Ordinances, Section 3.08 Civil Service System that call for merit selection and promotions free of discrimination. That prac, the practice that is in use is that of the Special Salary Upgrade, or SSU, found in Fresno County Salary Resolution 413.9 through 413.10. In short, SSUs are supposed to be used to fill a short-term need to pay an employee in a lower classification to perform work related to the higher classification. Unfortunately, it is being used to promote individuals based upon unknown factors that may be based on equity factors of gender or race rather than a transparent vetting of potential candidate's skills and qualifications. While the department heads may state that is not their intention or practice, SEIU would counter that incumbents granted SSUs are later promoted to the position by the same persons who installed them to the SSU. Thus, when civil service opposes competitive promotional opportunities are announced, it is widely known that sham interviews are held to legitimize unfair, non-transparent, and cloak reasoning appointments up to SSU. Furthermore, there are other inherent issues with the policy as currently written that when unchecked, allows departments to grant promotional provisions to SSUs that stand in direct violation of Fresno County Salary Resolution's policies dictating SSUs. For these reasons, I am asking the Board to place a moratorium on the use of SSUs to management positions until these matters are vetted and resolved. This is the only way to assure that Code of Ordinances Section under 3.08 are not violated. Thank you.
Excuse me, Riley, you said SSU. Is that what it is?
Yes, Special Salary Upgrade.
Oh, got it.
That's just acronym, sorry.
Good afternoon, Board. John Jasper, SEIU Local 521. I'm the Vice President of Supervisory Unit. I'm here to echo some of the comments Rodney Tauford, who's our President of SEIU, made. This has a impact with our supervisory unit throughout the county, and right now, the SSU, the Special Salary Upgrade, is, is, is an issue right now. As Riley mentioned, it's a temporary fix to problems, but it should not be a long-term solution, and that's what it's turning into. There are extensions sometimes with these SSUs, and I know we dove into some of the county org or the regs, and they say those SSUs, if something's vacant, the department can use an SSU, but they should also look at promoting those folks into a, to a position that is vacant. It does provide an unfair advantage for an SSU who says is in a position for six months over folks who are not in that position. And when we looked at the SSUs, folks don't even have to qualify for that position. So, somebody could get in there, get some really good information, and not even qualify for it. So, we're filling the department, they should be filling these based on who, who's qualified and basically not who, who they want. The civil service process, we feel it's unfair advantage to somebody with an SSU. We feel there are loophole. Like I said, provides unfair advantages to promotional opportunities to others who are not in those positions. We are requesting SEIU for this to be suspended until it can be reviewed at the county level and brought back to the Union. So, we possibly down the road can review this as a collective hole. So, that's our position on it.
Good afternoon. On April fourteenth, 2022, Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Javier Becerra said this regarding the COVID-19 vaccines. Quote, "We know these vaccines are killing people of color, blacks, Latinos, indigenous people at about two times the rate of white Americans. My name is Ronald F. Owens, Jr. I was a public information officer at the California Department of Public Health for more than fourteen years. I brought this information to my management on several occasions, but unfortunately, they made it about the messenger and not the message. Last July twenty-ninth, I sent this Board of Supervisors a five-page PDF detailing all this information, what I tried to do to alert the management at CDP H regarding the dangers of the COVID-19 vaccine. In that five-page PDF, I cited studies from Italy, Germany, Japan, indicating that the vaccines are killing people. I followed up that email on December with further information. From the time that I alerted this Board and your fifty-seven other county Board Supervisors across this state, more than four hundred people here in California filed entries with the Vaccine Averes Event Reporting System. Did you know that ninety-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight Californians have filed injuries because they've been injured with the COVID-19 vaccine? Did you also know that seven hundred and forty-nine Californians have died because of the COVID-19 vaccine? You probably know that in this county, there is a nurse, Michelle Spencer, who is suing her hospital because there has been an increase, a four-hundred percent increase of fetal demise. That's a clinical phrase meaning babies are dying. I will follow up my comments today by sending you, forwarding you what I sent to you last July, 2024, referencing what I sent to you this past December, and adding some more information about myself, who am I as a whistleblower. The bottom line is this. You have a statutory responsibility, according to Health and Safety Code 101025, to reserve and protect the public health. At minimum, you need to alert your residents that the COVID-19 vaccines are not safe and are not effective. I urge this Board for you to direct your county health officer to stop promoting, stop administering, and stop distributing COVID-19 vaccines. I appreciate the extra time. I rode my Canine Motorcycle, hundred sixty-seven miles from Sacramento, and this is my forty-fourth county Board Supervisor appearance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
You'll be the last speaker.
Thank you very much. I'm here with an odd request. About a week and a half ago, I dropped off a two-page sponsorship request. I'm an author, my name's JP Sweeney. I'm an author and a speaker, and I was invited to speak at the UN September twenty-third for their eightieth General Assembly. The, the meeting is actually at the Banquet Hall, which is an invitation only and very expensive to attend. So, I'm asking for sponsorship to help with that. My expertise in, explained in the, in the original request, my expertise is new technology transit or advanced transit technology. And due to the Valley losing four billion dollars from the federal government for the high-speed rail, what I'm looking to do is talk, get a global stage, and with the support of Fresno County, Madera County, Merced, Tulare Kings, and Bakersfield County, which I sent the, where I hand-delivered the same papers that I gave to you. I'm looking for support on a global stage for the 2023rd Agenda, which is the topic of the eightieth General Assembly in New York. And so, I came here without writing anything because I figured I only have a couple of minutes. So, what I really wanted to do is hand this, which is an update to the, to the county clerk, or to the clerk, and, and it goes over some of the details. It's more about, Fresno has over forty miles of existing allocated light rail rights of ways. What this goes into a little bit of detail about is that every freeway that California has built since the mid-eighties includes a median that's allocated light rail. And the question is, you know, it's more about what is Fresno's approach and the Valley's approach to this year being 2025? When I was a kid, we were supposed to have flying cars by nineteen eighty, and we're like forty-something years past that. So, it's, because of the expertise that I, I'm involved with, which is advanced transit, there has to be some consideration for what are we going to do for...
Okay, thank you very much.
I wasn't paying attention.
We now move to items sixteen through twenty-two. If there's any public comment for closed session.
Is there any public comment on closed session? Hearing none, do I got a motion to go to closed?
Do we need to report out after closed?
Well, I was going to ask him after we made a motion. I mean, you want to chair the meeting, go ahead. All right.
There you go.
What's your disclaimer?
We do not anticipate reporting out. You may adjourn after closed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we're closed, going to closed session.